We're going to call this meeting to order. Para traducción en español, por favor escanea el código localizado en la última página de la agenda. Vice Mayor?
Please stand for the flag salute and remain standing for innovation.
It's come before you this evening and we're so grateful and thankful for your presence that's in these chambers. God, we take a moment and Lord, we honor and thank all those that had gone before us. Lord, that have fought for our freedom, that made decisions so that all of us can be in this place tonight to discuss what is, what we would call business in the city of Riverbank. Lord, we're so grateful and thankful for Mayor Hernandez and the council and the city staff. I pray for protection and I, Lord, I pray for provision for them and pray for wisdom in making decisions. Lord, as a public, Lord, and residents of Riverbank, I just pray for unity in this house, Lord, that we're able to share, Lord, our concerns, Lord, we can share our voice and, Lord, at the end of the day, know that we're walking away from here doing our part in making Riverbank the best place to live in Stanislaus County. Lord, I just thank you for your peace. I thank you for unity. I thank you for your presence in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Odebe?
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Here.
Councilmember Col?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Mayor Hernandez? Here. Um, there's no agenda changes, correct? Yeah. And any council authority members, staff who has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time.
I have a conflict of interest with item fourteen point one due to a personal relationship with the claimant.
Presentations. I guess they could have read this one from the dais, but it is National Arbor Day. I know that's what we're all here for. Um, so this is really important for us for many reasons and part of that is it's going to help the city be able to advocate for additional funding for our city's programs. So, uh, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for planting trees. Whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the version of our precious topsoil by wind, water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other products. Whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. Whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, the city council in the city of Riverbank hereby proclaim April twenty-second as Arbor Day in the city of Riverbank. And I urge all citizens to celebrate this day to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Further, urge all citizens to plant trees to block out in the harm, promote the well-being of this and future generations. And I know, uh, for example, Love Riverbank is leading for, by example, so thank you for all you're doing. And even more exciting, we are celebrating Professional Municipal Clerks Week. So we'd love to have our city clerk come down. So here in Agenda Gabriela Hernandez, no relation, uh, provides a lot of support for our city and works, um, just like everyone on the team really hard in the background. So this is for you, whereas the city, whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest amongst public servants. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between citizens, local governing bodies and agencies at other levels. Whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of the neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal services to all. Whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops and annual meetings of the state, uh, county and international professional organizations. Whereas it is the most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Rachel Hernandez, Mayor of the city of Riverbank, do recognize this week of May fourth through May tenth as Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to you and our, all of our clerks uh, for the essential services that you provide and for your outstanding dedication to the community that you serve. So thank you very much. We'd love to take a photo with the council.
I just want to say thank you really quickly to, um, first of all, our city manager, who gave me this opportunity three years ago, um, and appointed me the city clerk. It's been a tough road, but we've gone through it and I thank her for trusting me and I thank our council and our mayor for trusting me and our staff. Um, thank you to our community. Um, I'm here to serve you and be a liaison between you and our city council. So I hope you know that I'm here to serve you, um, as well as our council and I'd like to thank everybody for this opportunity to serve as your city clerk.
Okay, so we have a workshop on preparation of a short-term rental ordinance.
Joshua Mann, your Director of Community Development, will start off this report.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Um, as Maricela mentioned, tonight we have a workshop, um, on the short-term rental ordinance. Um, over the last several months, myself and David Niskin with JB Anderson Land Use Planning have been working on a draft ordinance and tonight we just wanted to present some information, the rough framework of the ordinance and then take, um, any questions or input you may have. So with that, I'd like to introduce David, um, who will be given the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Mayor, members of the council, David Niskin and JB Anderson Land Use Planning. Tonight, we bring forth a workshop to discuss a preparation of a short-term rental ordinance. Uh, let me see if this is working here. There we go. Perfect. Okay, so tonight's presentation, I'll be going over kind of the purpose of this ordinance as well as the definition of a short-term rental. Uh, a survey of the surrounding jurisdictions, what other cities in Stanislaus County and San Joaquin County are doing. And then discuss, uh, various workshop items. That'll better inform us on how the council would like to see the ordinance, uh, prepared and different regulations. And then also discuss the next steps on, you know, what we're going to be doing after this. So tonight's presentation and workshop is to solicit input from city council and the public on the preparation of the ordinance. Uh, short-term rentals are defined as, quote, "the use of any dwelling or portions thereof for dwelling sweeping or lodging purposes for thirty consecutive days or less." Uh, they're most commonly referred to, uh, as Airbnb or VRBOs, booking.com. I'm sure you've seen that, those websites and they're rented for a short duration, sometimes for vacation rentals. And then sometimes, in most cases, they're furnished dwelling units or a person can, uh, rent a furnished bedroom in a dwelling unit. Now, we took a look at the other jurisdictions within the county as well as in San Joaquin County. Most of the jurisdictions don't have any regulations. Now, what does that mean? It means that if someone comes to that city, or in this case, the city of Riverbank, and wants to establish a short-term rental with a business license and everything, that makes it legit. If there's no regulations, typically that means that it's not permitted and they're not allowed to, to move forward. Um, in most cases, you'll see a lot of, uh, VRBOs or bookings, booking.com, uh, that have rentals in most jurisdictions, even if they don't have any regulations. But technically speaking, if they come to planning, which we, which we, uh, enforce and review the regulations, we would tell them that it's, it's not permitted. Now, there are some jurisdictions that do permit it, like in Modesto. They permit it through their transient occupancy registration permit. That's a permit that can, someone can get on their website and through the city. Lodi permits it through what's called a home occupation permit that establishes a business within a home. Um, as, and then Manteca uses a short-term rental and lodging permit and a business license that is associated with that. Now, some jurisdictions require an occupancy limit, meaning the number of persons per bedroom or the overall unit. Um, the only one that in this kind of local area is in Manteca where they have an occupancy limit of two adults and one child per room. And then they also have a age requirement on who can rent the, who can establish the short-term rental and lodging permit. And then the other area that we'd like your input on tonight is the, which zoning districts would the short-term rentals be allowed? For the most part, short-term rentals are associated most commonly with single-family residential units, uh, both renting the entire unit or renting a room. But there's other options as well in allowing them in the R-two district, which is most commonly known for duplexes. And then also in R-three, which is the multifamily zoning, zoning district. So there's some options there. So I'm going to go through a few topics, um, and please feel free to stop me and discuss it amongst yourselves. So ask me any questions, I'm, I'm happy to help. Um, the first area we'd like the council's input on is which zoning districts we would, uh, prepare the ordinance to do, to allow short-term rentals. Um, there's four that we've listed here, uh, R-one, which is single-family residential duplex, R-two, R-three, which is multifamily residential and PD Plan Development. And the reason why PD is on there because there are some PD Plan Development districts in the city which are single-family residential districts, essentially. They're single-family homes. So we want to make sure that, that we capture, capture those projects in here as well. And then anything that we do, um, also, we'll also include a specific plan amendment to the Crossroads West specific plan because their zoning districts are specific for that, for that, that specific plan. So they're not codified as, as the other areas of the city.
So I think it would, I think it would be kind of helpful if you can kind of, so of the three or four that are already operating in the city, uh, where are they zoned at currently?
The ones that are operating in the city, and I've checked it various times because it's, they're not always listed. They're, they're mostly in the R-one zoning district and single-family homes. So if the council would like to have it primarily be located or permitted within si, uh, the single-family residential district, including the equivalent in Crossroads West, we can certainly make that happen and do that. I would also recommend, uh, including the PD district and make sure that use is listed in there because we want to make sure we capture the PD districts that are single-family homes as well. Um, the other option is to include it in the R-two district, which is, uh, like duplexes and sometimes single-family attached or single-family detached, just more denser projects. Um, but to answer your question, it's mostly a single-family district. So that's one area we'd like direction on. Um, the other is, should we establish a maximum number of uh, short-term rentals in the city and what that number should be? Um, it's not a regulation that we've seen other cities really adopt and, and embrace, other than like jurisdictions such as like Tahoe where it's like a really, uh, uh, they have a numerous amount of, uh, short-term rentals that they need to get control over. But, um, in Riverbank, it could be, for the most part, we've seen anywhere from one to ten uh, at most, from what we've seen on the website. We, I looked at March twelfth, there was just one, but we looked at it again on April first and there was, there was, uh, seven on there. So either we can establish a maximum or just leave it, uh, open-ended.
And when you were doing your research, there's no metrics by population, nothing, no kind of guidance there at all?
Not that I've, not that I saw, no. Yeah. I think it's to the discretion of the council.
Do we need to set up a number or can it be, at this point, we're, we're not on a limit, but come back and modify it?
You totally, you absolutely could. You could just leave it, leave it as is and then always add it in later if it's something that the council wishes us to do. That's not a problem. Okay, the next is the occupancy, occupancy limit. Like Manteca, they have, uh, two adults and one child per room. Most jurisdictions don't really have an occupancy limit. It's kind of one of those items where it's hard to enforce. You know, how do you know how many, exactly how many people unless there's a code complaint or some excessive violation? Um, so it's something that council can decide to, to include or not include. I, I think it's really kind of either way, in my opinion. Uh, most jurisdictions don't really have an occupied ceiling because if there is an over occupancy, it's something that would come up via, via a code complaint or a violation or fire code issue.
And you didn't mention, so I'm assuming there hasn't been anything excessive or egregious?
Not that I've been told by Josh. Yeah.
So, so really, we've just had one issue. There's a property in, in the original Crossroads area um, that has one, one house in particular where they were having, um, renting it out for pool parties. And it, it was extending late into the night, generating, uh, numerous complaints. And this was kind of a repeat offender. It kept, it kept having parties and rentals and, um, generated complaints, I think for a few months. Um, it was ongoing, we, um, had numerous complaints.
Okay, so think about that while as we go through the presentation, then we can come back and, come back and talk about it. Uh, the next item is the permitting requirement. Now, as in the other examples, they require home occupation permit, they require a short-term rental permit. Those things are all staff level. Um, one item that council could do is require what's called a conditional use permit, which is a discretionary action that's approved, uh, reviewed and approved by planning commission. And it requires a public noticing requirement of three hundred feet around, around the property. So if council would like, uh, we can write the ordinance to, to require a conditional use permit as part of the requirement to establish a short-term rental. Um, alternatively, the process could be at staff level via a home occupation permit or establishing a short-term rental permit. Um, that staff would review and then keep up to date, uh, yearly.
And, and that again, we could modify because this one's a little bit more aggressive, right? This one's more like Yeah. a little bit more involved. There's probably costs associated with this.
That's correct.
Right? Okay. And so that's something that we can do probably, right? Um, kind of merge into that if we see it becoming more of a problem because it sounds like the one is already a problem. We can merge it into that if we need to.
Yeah, and, and just keep in mind that if you decide to do it staff level right now and we have permits that come in and reviewed staff level and are approved. And then you come in and do a, require a conditional use permit, you can't go back and require those same permits to, to have a, it can't be retroactive, in other words. So it'd be only for new ones after that establishment, establish regulations, so. So. Okay, so another item is the application submitted requirements. In the ordinance, we're going to have a list of things that the application, uh, requires for it to be complete. Uh, typically, those would be include address, type of dwelling unit, number of bedrooms, parking, you know, uh, proof of insurance. But if there's any specific requirements that council would like to see, um, we can certainly include those. Um, as part of the review of the ordinance, you can always look at what we've prepared and then base your decision off of that. Like, hey, I don't see, um, I don't know, uh, proof of liability insurance for the city or something like that, that we need to include as part of the requirements and we can add it in uh, as we go through the, the adoption process for the ordinance. Okay, and the next item is for, uh, renewal. Um, whether it includes a conditional use permit or not, there's still, there's still going to be a permitting process through the city, either through, um, you know, the business license or a short-term rental permit. Um, one of the items that we've seen in other jurisdictions is that they do a renewal, uh, process each year. So it just kind of keeps up, up to date on the, uh, short-term rental. Um, maybe someone moved and they don't want to do it anymore and then that would kind of fall off. Um, but it's something that would be kind of a yearly thing. So we think that's important to include and we want to make sure that council's in the same, same direction there. Okay, the next is, um, violations. Um, we can include in the ordinance a list of potential violations. Now, if a conditional use permit's required, if there's an issue, that conditional use permit could always be brought back to council and revoked or put back to planning commission, excuse me, and revoked. So there's already established process for that. But if it's a staff level, we want to make sure that if there's continued issues with a short-term rental and, you know, excessive violations of the city's noise, noise ordinance, for example, um, that there's a process for, uh, for that to be revoked. So, uh, maybe it's not something that you need to like really weigh in totally at this time, but just know that we're preparing, uh, a list of violations that could put the short-term rental, uh, permit in, in jeopardy if there's excessive issues with the short-term rental. Okay, so those are the major, the major topics. So I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions or we can go back to slides on certain, uh, certain aspects of the, the presentation, the workshop, but what we're thinking the next step should be is to, um, prepare the draft ordinance based on the comments we received tonight from council and in the public, if, if you, if you wish. Then present the draft ordinance in a second workshop, just so that everyone's on the same page of, of what the ordinance would look like as far as all the content. Um, and then from there, if, if council's in concurrence and, and likes what they see, then we can move forward with the formal adoption process, which require, uh, planning commission, uh, public review, public hearing and, uh, city council public hearing for adoption. And then from there, once it's adopted, it would become effective thirty days thereafter, after the second reading, excuse me, so.
Are there any questions from council comments?
Uh, no question. So you're looking for, okay, so for direction on, uh, let's go with the first one. There's the zoning. Um, I'd like to keep it there. I don't know if we need to kind of expand it into the, into the multifamily. So R-one sounds to me, and obviously everybody else will voice their concern, or their opinions, R-one with plan development, single-family. All of that kind of ties in together. So I don't, I don't, I don't see us kind of expanding into that unless there's a better argument for that. Uh, as far as limiting the quantity, uh, I, I like the metrics, but there is no metrics, right? When we're, we're kind of looking at the sheriff's contract, we go by population, but even that's a little outdated. So, um, I'm going to throw a number and then I'd love to hear council, uh, rebut it. Let's go with like ten, uh, no more than ten. Um, for three, uh, the condition you use permit sounds a little bit more involved. It's, it's, uh, it, it does cost a lot of money, uh, but it does sound like the short-term rental, uh, it does give staff level, uh, some teeth to kind of go after them if, if they're, you know, violating any kind of noise, noise ordinances, occupancy, if they're doing any of that, they do have teeth to, to kind of, to, to address that. So I, I do like that one. Uh.
Like the conditional use, requiring conditional use permit? Do you like the?
Application.
Okay, application.
Yeah, sorry, I was, I was referring to your conditional use permit. To me is, uh, is more on the, on the more aggressive side. Uh, and my, my, mine, the application one falls kind of right in the middle there. So that way kind of staff has full control of it, has teeth, and then we can expand it to the CUP if we need to. Uh, and that could be a council decision. Um, let's see, renewals definitely in, in support of that and violations definitely. Uh, can we pull up the violation slide again?
Next one.
So I, I don't have any issues with any of those. I think staff, staff can definitely, uh, handle those right there.
And that's a list that we've had, have already prepared for the ordinance.
And then, and then collecting the transient occupancy tax, where is that kind of built into?
It would be built into the ordinance because the Riverbank has a TOT chapter.
Okay, so that, to me, that, that for sure has to be included in there.
So I feel like, um, I, I mean, I appreciate you mentioning the retroactive aspect of this. So I feel like, I mean, I appreciate you mentioning the retroactive aspect of the CUP. And so it feels like I would like to, if if council's open to take some time and maybe do some formal data collection. On all of these aspects so that we can come back and have the formal data to be able to address all of these things. Because I I want I am, you know, agreeing in agreeance with what you're mentioning, but it feels like I want to take pause a little bit. And get some of that information formally.
Okay, would you like to come back, come have us come back with some information?
Right, if some, I mean, go through maybe the summer months. Right, and and into maybe the new year and get sixteen months of data for us to be able to address.
The number of short term rentals in the city.
Right, the the, you know, violate or the violations that people are submitting complaints about, the code enforcement violations, that kind of thing.
Okay.
So I do agree about the data collection. I did some research. We have around seven short term rentals in Riverbank.
Yeah.
And the vast majority, the average trip nights are only nineteen nights. So we're not getting your night party, book it for the weekend. We already have ordinances in place that can be enforced when it comes to sound. So some of this just sounds like it's kind of recreating the wheel a little bit.
Sure.
And they're people's properties, they're private properties. So I do believe in people having the ability to do what they want with their properties within reason, right? So if there's a noise ordinance, then follow the ordinance. And if they're not, then we either need to call code enforcement to get them out there to watch it at those hours or get law enforcement involved. Airbnb does have a law enforcement portal where the city can go in and they can log in and they can make make complaints and Airbnb can address accordingly and even kick them off as a host. So I think some of it, we're just creating more work for ourselves. But I am, I do think maybe an application for short term rental is legitimate and maybe an annual renewal, but that's kind of where I stand with this whole process.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I have a question. So he talked, Josh talked about a place that was allowing the pool. How does that work with, because it sounds like the short term rental, all of this is more about renting the place, not just the pool. Is that correct? I mean, the complaints that we've had, is that just them renting the pool?
Yeah, so I I mentioned that pool property and some of this is a little bit, I guess it's unverified, if you will. It's some some of the information we got was from the complainant, just stating that this property had been renting out the pool. To have pool parties and obviously at night it's generating noise complaints after ten P M. And I don't know offhand, though, I can't tell you if they were also renting out, you know, for multiple days and just happened to have a party in the pool or. Or actually may may have just been loud in the pool area.
But we'll address that in this also about if they're just renting. I mean, can we address that in the in this ordinance? Where, okay, I just want to make sure if this is something that we're seeing, that we're addressing that as well as just the rental of homes.
I have a question. You do a background check and how far back do you go?
He can include that in the in the ordinance as part of the seminal requirements. We would refer, we would coordinate with the with police on what what they would require. So it wouldn't be something we would create out of thin air. Yeah. But if that's something that council would like to see as part of an application requirement that they have to go through a background check with police, we can certainly do that.
I think, back to what I said, I think that we need to really, really focus on making sure that we're holding these booking sites accountable because they do have no party bound, no parties. They have bands, they have procedures in place. And so I would hate to create more work for the staff on something that they can they have more say over. It's easy to kick somebody off a website and them not being able to do it anymore. Because, you know, once the address is there, it's there. So I really, I would like to see the data and see really if law enforcement was given the heads up or if it is just coming from. A neighbor who's upset about somebody being loud at midnight.
I think in the ordinance too, we need to make sure that they are using one of those websites and not. I mean, there's other places that you can rent homes, I think, but if they're using those websites, then we have more control, like you said.
And and part of the seminal requirement would be for them to list the websites that they're using. You know, whether it be V R B O or Booking or, you know, Airbnb, the the three major ones, really. Yeah, and this is with the whole purpose of this is to establish a permitting process so that, you know, if someone does want to. Rent out their home for a short time for some someone that's staying for an extended period of time, couple of weeks or something, then they have a process to to easily do that through the city. And the city is aware of how many there are and and who's doing them and, you know, just keeps the city better informed.
What would we classify as a short term rental? I guess would be my question because, I mean, we have nurses, for example, who get three month contracts, six month contracts. So what are the parameters around a short term rental or what are we classifying as a short term rental?
It's anything that's rented like thirty days or less is a short term rental. Yeah. And those situations, sometimes they sublease, you know, and and as an example. Or they, you know, they rent for thirty days and then they they continue, they they move or they leave and then come right back and rent for another thirty days. But technically speaking, the the way the definition is written, it's less than thirty days. Yep.
Yes, it sounds like we would love some data and then you raised some flags for me too when you mentioned, you know, insurance liabilities for the city and that kind of things. So maybe the application at bare minimum and and some of those flags.
And we could do some research on what other cities are requiring as part of their seminal requirements. Are they going to that very much extreme of requiring? You know, all that like insurance and proof and all all the, you know, all that stuff. So we can, we can come back with some more information to council to until you and then from there you can decide whether or not you want to move forward with the ordinance or not.
I think when we're doing the data collection, we need to inspect what's being required of the property owners too.
Yeah.
Do they have to submit liability insurance?
Sure.
Do they have to submit their homeowner's insurance? Is there additional insurance that they need? Is it in their insurance policy to be able to rent it out? So I think we need to inspect better what these websites are requiring too. And even if there's parameters that we could put from nine five three six seven, like this is what's required to have a short term rental here. But I, again, I think that we need to hold these websites more accountable to the services that they're offering and not dependent on the homeowners with.
And we can take a look at that as well. Yeah, yeah, happy to. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. So public comment, at this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within subject matter jurisdiction of the city council advisory board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes and time cannot be yielded to another person under state law. Matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. And so I want to emphasize that we want to hear everybody's comments. Item eleven point one is specifically comments regarding fee waivers. And so I do want to offer this time with general comments, but for folks that want to come up and speak to the project as a whole, to be able to do that at this time as well. So, uh, city clerk, Sammy Martinez?
Hi, good evening, council. Good evening, neighbors and friends. My name is Sammy and I represent Love Riverbank. I'm here just to let you guys know that we have a couple more days left until our annual citywide volunteer day. And I see a bunch of our neighbors here who look like they're very passionate about our community. So we would invite you to bring some of that passion out to our volunteer day. You guys can sign up, pre-register on our website at loveriverbank.com. There are plenty of projects out there for all of us, different ages. And we'd love to have you guys. We're going to kick off our rally at the back of the community center, eight o'clock in the morning. They'll register between eight and nine o'clock and then we will get together for our rally for about a half hour. Everybody will disperse up into our community to do your projects and then we welcome you back to the community center to have pizza for lunch. So if you guys have any questions, please reach out to us, please send us an email, but we'd love to see all of you guys there on Saturday morning. Thank you.
Ms. Karen Conrato? Good evening. Mayor Hernandez, Vice Mayor Fossey, city council members and staff. My name is Karen Conrato. I live in the area affected by the proposed Riverwalk project. I am speaking here tonight to emphasize my opposition to the proposed housing and commercial development. That would permanently destroy the highly productive designated floodplain agricultural land. As well as the Stanislas River wildlife habitat corridors and the plants and wildlife themselves. Please read and analyze the voluminous information presented to you in the draft, T I R. I beseech you as well to carefully read the information residents and agencies have carefully and factually compiled for you, the city council members. In order to help make an informed and fair decision. The proposed project gives information in glowing terms that is often couched in vague generalities. That skim over and or ignore areas of conflict. I'm sure that you've noticed as you read it. As you are well aware, is it a serious decision you are making that I hope is based on facts and serious consideration of the long term consequences? Thank you as always for your time. Mary Chris, gotcha?
Good evening, mayor, council members and fellow community members. My name is Mary Chris and I'm speaking tonight behalf of many residents. Who strongly oppose the sixty seven tiny home project. Since the March eleventh meeting, many of us from Crossroads and across Riverbank have stepped up and taken action. We've done the work. We've shown up. We've gone door to door to educate neighbors who hadn't heard about the project. We've spoken to city council and planning commission meetings, hosted outreach events, passed out passed out flyers. Built a website with facts and timelines, opened lines of communication with several of you. We've also launched two petitions, one with four hundred and forty four handwritten signatures for relocation and another online. That gathered over four hundred thirty signatures for abolishing the project altogether in just three days, which I'm going to hand to the city clerk. We've created an Instagram account, started and ended a Facebook group and stood outside Saint Mark to make sure more residents were informed. We have exhausted every avenue and we think to bring transparency awareness to this process. And yet a couple of us haven't received a response to our questions from the C V C R project manager and emails sent to Mayor Hernandez on May on April eighth. We've put effort because we care deeply about the city and the people in it. Honestly, I don't believe the residents in District One have done the same level of work and that matters. The people who are most impacted by their voices loud have made their voices loud and clear. So tonight I ask everyone here who opposes this project, raise your hand. Council members, look around. These are your constituents. These are the people who are paying attention. We are united and we are not here to argue, but we are here because we believe the project brings more risk than benefit to River Riverbank. Thank you.
Mr. Milt Treewiler?
Good evening, mayor, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. Milt Treewiler, I was born in Stanislas County and I've lived here all my life. In Stanislas County, we've been given Garden of Eden. Are we going to turn it into a food desert? We have an intellect and we have choices and some people are choosing not to conserve the priceless resources we have. We must be focused on planning for our children and descendants since they cannot do this for themselves. They can't do it for themselves because they're too young or they haven't been born yet. There's not one acre of farmland in some entire states and even countries as good as the farmland that proposed Riverwalk project area near here. Or as the farmland in the area north of Turlock, or as the farmland in the areas all over Modesto, Series, Houston and Salida. Stanislas County's farmland can grow food for hundreds of years because of the soil, the water, the climate we have here in our county. There is an abundance of poor soils and wastelands in California for the developers to build houses on. Like the Altamont Pass area or the area east of Oakdale or the large landmass areas west of Patterson along Interstate five. Or in the Fairfield area along Highway twelve. The large acreages of these areas have poor soils or lack water and are not a good place for growing food. In our county cities, we must grow up and not out. We can build high rise condominiums, multi story townhouses and three or more story apartment complexes. You should be aware that in the next fifteen years, California will need to follow nine hundred thousand acres of farmland in the San Joaquin Valley. South of Stanislas County, there's just not enough water to irrigate it. We must be good stewards and conservationists for our children and descendants since they cannot do this for themselves. Please wake up and vote no on the Riverwalk project. Wake up for the sake of our children and our descendants. And I have one quick comment statement I want to make. I have no financial interest in any property in Stanislas County or anywhere else. I own my house of residence and that's it. It's paid for. I am not attached to or with any developer, builder or anyone in the building industry. I am standing here for our children and our descendants who aren't even born yet. This land, once it's covered up, it becomes useless. You cannot grow food. And we have the only land because of M I D and T I D, they have the irrigation water. You go south, they're not getting water. They're trying to pump water out. The wells are going dry. It's so important that we save the land over in the Riverwalk area. Thank you very much.
Olivia?
Good evening, Mayor Hernandez, Vice Mayor, council members and everyone here in the audience today. My name is Olivia Ramblar. I'm broker and owner of Timeless Real Estate here in Riverbank, but I'm also your Director of Community Events for the Riverbank Chamber of Commerce. First off, I want to say thank you to everyone who came out to the Riverbank Community Easter egg hunt and vendor event. And thank you to everyone who helped. Councilmember Call donated eggs and candy and Councilmember Pramital was out there all day long with. Tons of volunteers from the church and we had like five hundred people out there that day. So it was. Better than we could have expected for our first event that we partnered with Parks and Recs. Thank you, Parks and Recs, again, for everything that day that you helped with in Arizona, who was amazing out there. So thank you. And we do have some other events coming up. We do have our Stanislas Equity Partners steps workshops that we have partnered with Chamber of Commerce. We have the cohort, we're going into week five, sorry, four this week. Week four is the twenty third, it's going to cover marketing and week thirty is going to cover funding for your business, it's way to grow your business if you have one already or if you're trying to start one. That's going to be here at the city council chamber from five thirty P M to seven thirty P M this Wednesday, next Wednesday. And then the sixth meeting is going to be on May seventh and we are going to go over networking and it's not going to be here because it's going to be at collective space. Riverbank Chamber of Commerce is hosting a multi-chamber mixer from all the chambers in the county. So we're going to have that at the collective space here on Santa Fe from five thirty P M to seven thirty P M. Snow White is saying they're going to bring some ice cream that night. We're looking for some other food vendors who want to participate as well. So come on down and help. And then May fourteenth, we have an A I and chat G P T workshop to grow your business. Five thirty P M to seven thirty P M here. It's a Wednesday city council chamber. On May twenty first, we have Cumulus Media hosting a luncheon learn. It's to be determined, we'll get the venue tomorrow. It's going to be from twelve P M to one P M here in Riverbank. They're going to tell us how to grow our business through social media, your website and radio. Have a lot of good things that you wouldn't know that Cumulus Media has. And then April twenty ninth, Snow White drive in here in Riverbank, thirtieth anniversary ribbon cutting is at five forty five P M. The fun starts at four P M. There's going to be music, classic cars, the first fifty attendees get free vanilla ice cream cone. And then Daryl's going to have some other appetizers and goodies throughout the day at that event, but remember ribbon cutting is at five forty five. That is a Tuesday, the twenty ninth. Then also on May third, it's a Saturday, we are, the Chamber of Commerce is going to have a booth and be a part of the Modesto Center Plaza. Chamber member market day. It's Saturday, May third, nine A M to three P M. They do have tents for sale, ten by tens that are only sixty dollars. So come on out, let us know if you have any questions about events or if you want to join chamber. Thank you.
We have one on Zoom, mayor. Number ending in three, one, zero, eight. Can you please unmute?
Hello?
Yes, please go ahead.
Um, I've been on waiting because I had my questions had to do with your workshop on seven point three. Can I still comment on that?
This is general comment, Ms. Halbert. Go ahead. This is general comment, Ms. Halbert. Go ahead.
But not on what you've already done.
Sorry?
Can I comment on the on the uh thing, the short-term rentals or not?
Yes.
Okay. My question, Jersey, um, are you going to require that the homeowner be present in the house or live in the house when these things are rented out? Number two on the zoning, most of the R two, R three, R one, that most of that is downtown? Is it going to include crossroads, the whole area? Main thing is parking. If you're going to allow three people to an apartment, you have two to three bedrooms and and a duplex on each side. You're looking anywhere from twelve to nine to eighteen people, which may all be different families or whatever. Where are you going to park? You have not even discussed the issue with the parking, where you're going to put it. Most places, especially in R two downtown, there's very little parking. You might have two or three on the street. If you have three or four units in there, you're going to have even more people. You need to discuss the parking on it. Or maybe limit the vehicles, the number of vehicles that that they can use. Um, the noise ordinance for the city is for twenty-four. They have noise ordinance that covers twenty-four hours, but but your presentation only covered from ten to seven. So I'm wondering why they're not going to have to follow the ordinance for the rest of the time. And I also did not see, I don't know if you've even talked to the police department on how they feel about it. Last thing is specific plans. Um, I don't know about crossroads, crossroads, but I know the downtown Pacific plan doesn't doesn't will not allow this. So I'm wondering how you're going to, are you going to ignore the plan? Are you going to amend it? Or or what? Because nobody's talked to anybody down here in the downtown area. So I would like more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, that is all I have.
Okay. Any more public comment? Yes. Could you just state your name and address here?
My name's Christina Calderon. Um, I'm here to state my opposition for the location of the housing project. The transparency to who will be living in these homes isn't very clear to the public. And for that reason, I feel like we are putting the kids in my community at risk. Mayor and council, please look well into this project and choose a different location. I think that a lot of the people even just here don't even know how many homes it is. And something that small should be shared. So I'm just hoping that you guys can somehow make it more aware to everybody what's exactly going in there. So then they could decide yes or no, if they agree or oppose. But where I'm standing, it's risk for the community. You guys just had, like you said, five hundred kids at the Easter hunt, and you're going to have, you know, we don't even know if if first it started off with foster youth, and now it's something completely different is what everybody's talking about. And I can name a list, but I'm not going to because I'm sure you guys already know. But I just hope that this is well thought out before the decision's just made. Thank you.
We'll come back to you. Well, we'll have the gentleman in the red. I know your name, but could you please say your name up here?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Um, I am Mark Heinzinger. My wife and I are happily new residents of the Parkwoods Community in Crossroads West. We have been impressed and pleased with all the activities and events in Riverbank we've seen and been able to attend. There's been much discussion regarding affordable housing in our neighborhood and at recent city council meetings. We support affordable housing and believe Riverbank must provide viable housing options for all residents. The project on morale in Oakdale needs to be given support and guidance so that it could meet regulations and be successful. Our understanding of the housing element updates and general plan describes the city as supporting, encouraging, and pursuing affordable and varied housing options for all residents. Having a clear direction in the plans needed to implement action will allow Riverbank to continue to be a vibrant city for all residents with parks and libraries, walking and bike trails, community spaces, which I think makes the community a great place to live. We urge the city to consider the long-term impact of all decisions, especially affordable housing. If one location is not selected, then where would be the location in the future the city council could support, encourage, and pursue affordable housing? There has to be some sort of option in Riverbank. It can't just be nothing within three miles of my home. Therefore, there's no affordable housing if everybody in Riverbank thinks that way. We hope the council will be able to hear, respect all voices beyond just the loudest and most persistent voices that are able to share. Lastly, we always sincerely thank the council members for all the time, effort, and patience involved in attending endless meetings, a huge number of events, and listening to all of your constituents express all their varied views.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you, everybody, for showing up. This is kind of awesome. I don't think I've ever seen it this busy. Um, so I am here to, again, present data because that's what I do. Um, Terri Spazano, five, two, zero, seven, Yurlin Court. And this is on the affordable housing, um, project because I do understand that there's um some misinformation out there um that keeps getting repeated. And thank you, Councilmember Uribe, for reposting that fact sheet. Um, but I I don't know that it's being read. So, um, again, just take it list by list as I've had questions asked of me when we've been out. And then also from what I've seen on Facebook, uh, as far as people having questions. So first, the project will reduce property values. So I actually looked into this. Um, there was a question that asked me, will it reduce property values? And so, um, I did the research, and everyone can as well. Um, basically what I did is I looked at the Bay Area. I looked at our area here, um, looking at some of the projects that we already have, Sierra House, and then the other, um, recovery facility that we have. I property values continue to rise. Um, the Bay Area, I know someone had identified that a similar project, and there's not really any way to cross-reference a similar project because this is different. Um, there was no reduction in property values. Property values in California continue to rise. Someone did ask me about L A. I don't think that's a fair representation at the moment, um, due to the fires and lack of housing. So I did not look at L A. Happy to. Um, so I did look at section eight and low income, which similar, but not exactly what we're doing. So, and if anyone wants to, I'm happy to teach you how to do it. Um, so again, proposed risk to K through eight children because it is directly across the street from the park, and of course, it's in family housing. This also is family housing. Um, it's against state law to allow any, um, persons of at risk to be around or that put children at risk to be in housing, especially federally or state-funded housing near parks, schools, or any other facilities. Um, so that is not a an issue, to be honest. These, um, everyone that goes into these because it is state and federally financed, they will have background checks, both D O D and FBI to make sure that they know that they don't have any prior convictions around children or child putting child endangerment or violent crimes. Someone brought up recently about, um, drug alcohol dependency. In order to be qualified for these homes, you have to have, oh, sorry.
Thank you for this information.
Three minutes is, but that's, I'm happy to answer questions if anyone has them. Any other public comment? Please, could you just say your name when you come up?
Hello, uh, my name is Malina. This is my first time here, and this is my first time doing this. So I gave a comment card. I don't know if I'm supposed to be talking right now, but I am. Um, so I've lived in this community my whole life.
Malina, are you going to speak on the fee waiver or just on affordable housing?
Affordable housing.
Okay, go ahead.
And I've lived in this community my whole life. Um, I'm here tonight because I'm disturbed, not by the transitional housing project, but by the fear-based narrative surrounding it. Um, let's set the record straight. It's not a free-for-all. It's not chaos. It's structured, screened, and designed to help people, people who've already been failed by a system that was supposed to protect them probably multiple times. Yes, some of them may have faced addiction, mental illness, or homelessness, but those aren't labels that make someone dangerous. They make them human. And the real danger is ignoring the fact that these people are already living among us, facing the same challenges without the help that they need. I've been nearly flashed by someone in a car in our own neighborhood by Silver Park. No supportive housing project required. But I don't hear anyone talking about that. You're worried about your children. Teach them compassion. Teach them that helping someone, giving them a chance, doesn't increase danger, it reduces it. These aren't other or those people. They are foster youth, veterans, abuse survivors, human trafficking victims, people trying to survive in a world that gives them nothing and still demands they be better. In college, I met students who were homeless, sleeping in cars on couches after paying for their education. I've worked with women who had to escape abusive relationships and had no place to go. A friend of mine was aging out of the foster system, terrified for her future. And my own dad was homeless in his youth. Addendum. For a while, there was a homeless man living behind my house right here in Riverbank. He lived in a tent next to one of those electrical power boxes. I don't think he knew, but I'd watch him. And he became so familiar to me that I could spot him from a distance whenever I was out. He walked around barefoot, in and out of businesses with papers in his hand, job applications, resumes. He doesn't live behind my house anymore. Sometimes I wonder where he is. Sometimes I wonder how different his life could have been if he had the support he needed at the time. We keep saying, not in our backyard, but maybe it should be. Maybe safety isn't about fences and parks. Maybe real safety is about doing what's right, and even when it's uncomfortable. Maybe it's about looking out for the people who need us most. Thank you. Over here, the gentleman in the blue.
Sir, you put that you wanted to speak on eleven point one. Yeah, that's not up yet. Do you want to speak on the fee waiver or affordable housing? Okay, then you can come up. Um, for all those that put in their public comment cards, you all put eleven point one, so you will be called until that item comes up. Unless you want to speak on just affordable housing, you can come up now or wait till eleven point one comes up. It's on the fee waiver.
We'll we'll wait and hold your comment. Yes, but yeah, so we are doing public comment just generally for any item not including, uh, eleven point one, which is a fee waiver. So if you have any comments regarding fee waivers, we're, we are going to give you an opportunity to speak uh, when this item comes up, which is, which would be right after consent calendar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back up.
Yes, thank you. Are there any general public comments? Yes. And thank you, everyone, for understanding.
One, um, Mayor, Councilmember, and the public. Uh, my name is Amal Shoup, uh, and, um, I'm just listening to those, um, comments regarding the affordable housing. And I want to tell you that, uh, I agree with, uh, the young lady. And, uh, nice gentleman, Richard, the one that supports the project. Basically, when we talk to those people, like, as if we don't want them in our neighborhood, we, uh, miss on the opportunity that we provide the people. We need to be, um, looking for a chance to help. And those projects cannot be like a one, um, one step forward to recovery uh, from this problem all over the United States. And I believe by looking at other, uh, example, other places, like, if you see, uh, the homeless problem, how it was dealt with in other countries like printland and, um, in our, our United States, in, um, in Texas, you will be surprised how rewarding those projects are. Because of those projects, people are finding a job. They can put their resume and they can find someone who can come and pick them up and give them a chance of life, another life. So if we cross out everybody, it's not fair. You just need to think about it. If you can imagine yourself one day in those situations, what will you do? How can you recover? Like, the the problem, it happened just recently in Los Angeles, the fire. Nobody thought it, this thing could happen, and people were living in luxurious places, doing their daily thing, and things happen. And now there, most of those people, they're basically, they need help. If they don't have the money, they need the help. So if we turn our back on everybody in those conditions, we are missing out. So we need to provide opportunities for people, especially when it comes to young people, young generation, like foster kids, those are the people, they cannot leave the community later on. They cannot be something to be proud of if we support them now. So I'm, 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 I'm just here to tell you my vision. I did speak with the mayor about a big project, and hopefully one day that project will be a a true thing going to be, which is helping the homelessness go from being in in a bad situation to something that everybody want. From turning a crisis into opportunity, see the future. We need a lot of help in a lot of things. And this thing, I think, the start or the cornerstone where we can implement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Have a good day.
So general public comment, um, yeah, right there. There's Stripe sharing. Thanks.
Good evening, city leaders. My name is Angela Ferreira, and I stand before you today as a Riverbank constituent, a mother, a homeowner, and a productive citizen of this respectful and beautiful community. I respectfully request all of you to hear my words today. Sorry, I lost it. I would ask that, I know we're going to speak on the fee waiver, but also the entirety of this project. I'm asking for you to vote against it. Like so many, I know this project will lead to the degradation of our beautiful city, to which I've moved here from San Jose, California, where the exact societal problems existed, and the local government thought by providing abundant resources like shelters, affordable housing, and money would help reduce the problems, but instead it exacerbated it. Within a short period of time, our neighborhoods and local shopping centers became riddled with transient trash, crime, and more and more crime opportunists. Despite our golden and good hearts and our intentions like all of you today, we wanted all of that to go away, and we wanted to help the right people. It did not attract those people. It attracted the opposite. We do not have that population here in our beautiful city. We live here with our families. We pay taxes. We patronize the stores. We pour good into this city. I ask you to hear our voices, the stakeholders of the city of Riverbank. We live it. We know it. We know where it leads, and it is not good. If this is not enough to shed light on the reality, I will give you my personal testimony. I was once homeless. Not enough money or resources given to me would change my mind. I was what I was until I became with child and I had motivation. And I sought to put one step in front of the other. So again, I went years with all of the resources that we want to do today, and it did not help. It was what I wanted, when I wanted it. And I put my feet forward, got a master's degree. I have a great profession, beautiful four children, college-bound. And I stand before you today and ask you to think about this. Our beautiful city can change. I don't want needles in our park. I lived it. Thank you.
If you have a general public comment, you can come and speak in the green shirt, the green long sleeve.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Linda Legacy, and I live within four blocks of the area where the proposed housing is, the affordable housing and transitional housing. I am in favor of this project. I think it takes courage to provide for the needs of our society. We need low-income housing. We need transitional housing. We do not support people who need our help by putting them in ghettos, safe, faraway areas. We put them in areas where we can provide schools, transportation, markets, jobs. That's exactly what this area is. You know, we need to, I am willing, I don't see my house values will go down, but I'm willing to take a small decrease so I can support the members of my community, the people recovering from addiction, the foster children, maybe single moms or dads who have no other partner, who are trying to raise a family. They cannot afford the homes we have in our area. We need to provide them homes that they can live in and live a productive life. And I assure you, if we give them this chance, they will increase the power of our community, they will increase its richness. We do not strengthen ourselves by isolating to ourselves to one type of person, only the rich, only the powerful people. We need to include all segments of our society. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Public comment generally, and let, let me have the, well, you're, go ahead, come over here.
Mayor Hernandez, members of the council. My name is David Tucker. I am retired city engineer of Merced. I live and own the house on Lone Star Lane, about four blocks away from the proposed sixty-seven unit transitional housing project on Morel and Oakdale Road. I'm here to support this project. Transitional housing with its services and counseling is designed to help homeless people get back on their feet. To quote Matthew twenty-five forty, "And Jesus said, 'I tell you the truth. When you do it for one of the least of these, my brothers and sisters, you are doing it for me.'"
Please.
Good evening, city leaders. My name is Sierra Ferreira. I stand before you today to address the Riverbank Tiny Home Project. I lived in Riverbank for most of my childhood, and I have great concerns for the safety and well-being and safety for many children and young adults like myself. I ask to please, that you please think about the children, think about the young adults, and think about the next future in Riverbank and generation. It comes with a sad heart to see such a beautiful city become such a trashy city now. It hurts to see that this project that you are creating will have such a great impact on children, young adults like myself. I pray, and I pray that these young and amazing children who get off the bus and go to school every day and come home, that they are able to walk these streets at night and in the day, knowing that they have the freedom to do so without a homeless person attacking them and chasing them down the street. I personally have had this experience happen to me just last year. This is not okay. Homeless, I get it, there is many things that we can do to help them, but this is not one of them. I pray that you can see the horrible effects of this homeless project and how greatly impacted it will be for children and young adults like us. Riding buses, public buses, and having to deal with homeless people in the back, smoking weed, is not a good environment for us. Homeless shelters and homes will only bring trash and drugs, and we are the future of children here in Riverbank. Thank you.
Public comment? Please.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Rosalind Chandra, and I'm here to oppose the sixty-seven tiny home project that's projected to be built on Morel and Oakdale Road. As we know, permanent supportive housing is a complex issue. It has many benefits as well as concerns. We ask that you be transparent with this project from everything, from the planning, the placement, the budgeting, everything. Us residents, we want to be a part of this. We want to know what's coming. We want to know, we want to stay informed. This isn't about nimbyism, this is about being informed. You know, per the report done in twenty-twenty-four, this was a report, it's called a Stamosas Care Point-in-Time Report for the Homeless. Riverbank had a count of twenty-eight people experiencing homelessness, twenty-eight. That's a very small portion compared to the rest of the community of Stamosas, which came in at a number of two thousand and fifty-two. And of those reported, very small were reported to be of families. Majority of the men, a majority of the, the people in this report were adult men, males ranging from ages thirty-five to forty-four. Forty-five percent reported that they were incarcerated, spent time in jail and/or prison. Many also self-reported having severe mental disorders as well as having severe substance abuse and addiction disorders. Per the report, there's also other health concerns like diabetes, heart disease, hepatitis C, TB, HIV, and drugs. Other local disparities also come such as lice, scabies, bedbugs, skin infections like streptococcal infections, methicillin-resistant staph infections. This proposed project is serving complex individuals that need, have great needs. But this project will be housed in front of our sports complex, right in front of our sports complex, where many children play, five minutes away from elementary school, near school bus stops. I ask you, city leaders, is this really responsible zoning? Is the city of Riverbank prepared for the long-term financial cost that this project will have? Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name's Isabella Sparza. I also wanted to talk about the affordable housing project and my support for it because I keep hearing the same things about how there are only twenty-eight homeless people on the census in twenty-twenty-four for Riverbank, which is true. But also thirteen percent of the people, of the citizens in Riverbank are considered low-income. And of the twenty-five thousand residents in Riverbank, that's about, that's over three thousand people that are considered low-income. Of those three thousand people, a hundred and fifty-eight are students in a Riverbank Unified School District. So I keep hearing about how we have to protect the kids in our community. Those are the kids in our community. Those are the kids we should be protecting because a hundred and fifty-eight students in our school district are living in insecure housing and are, are at risk of homelessness, which is the point of our affordable housing. Yes, it's, it's a foster youth. It is veterans. It is people in transitional periods. And I think we all need to recognize that these are the people of our community that we should be protecting. Thank you.
Yes. If you have a general public comment, please.
So, sorry. First and foremost, my name is Brandon Player. I've been, I've lived in Riverbank since two thousand and three. My parents actually purchased in Crossroads when that had began. I've grown up here since. I, I guess rather than speaking on, well, sorry, first and foremost, because I don't have a planned speech here. I'm actually opposing the tiny home development. And rather than speaking on the people that may live in there, because I do believe that there might be good people that would move in there and there might be some bad eggs as well. I think that, and kind of speaking on the type of person that I am with money budgeting, or I guess the way that it's spent, I think that with the growth that's happening right now with our new shopping center, everything else that's happening right now, I think everything is, is excellent. However, I think rather than more housing and shopping, I think that more city entertainment would be nice. Maybe, for example, like some sort of fun park or something like that, I think would be maybe a better way to go about the expansion of the city. That's kind of where I stand with it. Little bit of a short, a short speech. My wife didn't want me to speak, but she's not here, so I'm a free man. So, but that's all I pretty much have to say with a racing heartbeat with my freedom. And I hope that we all make the right decision. And of course, all of you have a good night. So, there we are.
Thank you. Please.
Hi, my name is Devon Shelley. I am actually new to Riverbank. I moved here almost a year ago. I'm actually from Los Angeles, so I moved from that city to this one. I don't think that, I'm in, I'm opposed to the tiny home project. I really don't think it's going to be effective. Coming from the city I come from, we have the, I think the world's largest homeless population down there, I believe. And there's lots of different programs all around the city that say they're going to help people, you know, they, they claim they're going to eradicate homelessness, but they really didn't achieve that. It actually increased. They passed every measure that they wanted to pass to fight homelessness and drugs, and the city is running rampant with all that right now. You can easily look it up and find out about it. I don't want the city I moved to to become the city I left. I'm not rich, I don't come from money, I work hard. Went out, got a good job, and I figured out how to buy a house for myself and my family. I hope you guys really take into account the safety issues that can also be brought about. I don't want to have to worry about someone trying to break into my house or possibly assault my wife or my kids. So I hope you guys please think about the safety of the people when you're making your decision. And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Ones going twice, anything that popped up online?
Mayor, there is no one on Zoom.
Okay. So we're going to move forward to consent calendar. Item nine point one, wave readings. Item nine point two, approval of the city council LRA board minutes for April eighth, twenty-twenty-five. Item nine three, resolution accepting the public improvements for D.R. Horton, CA Three Inc. for Bruin Heights subdivision. Item nine point four, resolution authorizing city manager to enter into an agreement consenting to common use between the city of Riverbank and Medessa Irrigation District. Item nine five, resolution authorizing the submittal of an application to San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District for the Clean Alternatives to Fireworks Pilot Incentive Program and authorizing the Parks and Recreation Director to implement the program. Anything needing to be pulled or discussed? Otherwise, we can move forward with the motion.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as stated.
Second. Roll call, please. Councilmember Oriben?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, eleven point one, unfinished business. A consideration of a fee waiver request and permanent local housing allocation plan amendment request by Central Valley Community Resources, Inc. for the Riverbank Residential Home Village Project.
Good evening, mayor and council. As the members of the public will know, this is considered unfinished business as this is an item that was originally discussed at the March eleventh city council meeting. I'll wait for my PowerPoint to come up. So just a bit of project background with regards to specific actions that have been presented to the city council to date. On January twenty-eighth, the city council did authorize the reallocation of approximately one point five million dollars in funds received from a direct allocation via the State of California budget requested by Senator Eggman to support a transitional and permanent supportive housing project here in the city of Riverbank. This was done, the funding was received in an effort to continue the city's goal to offer different types of housing to our residents as well as to continue the efforts being made with regards to the Sierra House, which is providing services to our homeless residents here in the city of Riverbank. On February twenty-fifth, the city council adopted a resolution that authorized the submittal of a joint application between the city and Central Valley Community Resources, or CVCR, for funding via the Home Keep Plus program for twenty million dollars. The grant does offer a one-to-one match for any outside funds that are secured of the projects, of which any funding that the city is committing would be considered match funds. On March eleventh, the city council received the fee waiver and PLHA, which is Permanent Local Housing Allocation Plan Amendment Request. At that point in time, the city council requested that the applicant initiate the pre-application or pre-development process with our planning department prior to any consideration of if we fee waiver request or plan amendments. On April seventh, twenty-twenty-five, the planning department did issue their preliminary feedback on that pre-application, pre-development conversation based on the pre-application meeting held with the applicant. And so I'll briefly go over the fee waiver request. This was not modified from the March eleventh meeting. So the fee waiver request is requesting waiver of fees associated with the issuance of the building permit. So there's a variety of fees, including building permit fees, system administration fees, sewer connection fees, water connection fees, utility deposits, and plan check fees. In addition, there was a waiver request of our system development fees, which are typically allocated to streets and public works projects, water, wastewater, storm drainage, parks and recreation, police, and general government. So those are the fee waiver, total of the fee waiver requests that have been submitted for council's consideration tonight. The second part of their request was a plan amendment to our permanent local housing allocation funds. The permanent local housing allocation funds are funds that come to the city on an entitlement basis, meaning they have already been allocated to the city, and we simply have to submit a request for the funding based on the project that's being proposed. When we first authorized the plan with city council, we did allocate the first two years, which is the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty funds, to an affordable rental project at a hundred percent levels. The twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three funding, which is currently active, was allocated amongst a variety of different projects, including projects that would assist persons at risk of homelessness, housing acquisition and rehab, housing rehab. I'm sorry for those that don't know rehab, rehab is rehabilitation, and our first-time home buyers program, which we have here within the city. So twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three provided funding for those specific types of projects. The requests being made by Central Valley Community Resources is that those three years that we still have not drawn down funds on would be one hundred percent allocated towards their specific project. And that would qualify under pre-development, development, acquisition, rehabilitation, and preservation of multifamily residential live-work rental housing that is affordable. and preservation of multifamily residential live-work rental housing that is affordable to extremely low, very low, low, or moderate, moderate income housing households, including, uh, operating subsidies can also be paid, uh, via this funding. And currently, the estimate that we have for the three years of this grant allocation is four hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars. At this time, I am going to turn over the presentation to the applicant and representative of Central Valley Community Resources, uh, Ms. Darlene Barber Martinez.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff. Um, so I'm going to give you just some information, uh, briefly about a project, just to renew your memory, and also give you some information about C V C R. So as you see that the location, um, there's the A P N numbers, everybody knows where the location of the lots are. Um, and then our developer, Jenny Crane, from Rebuilding Green Affordable Housing Solutions, the builder, uh, project manager, Deanna Garcia, from Garcia's General Construction, and architect and civil engineer, Brad Hahn, from C H G Structural. Project oversight, Brad Hahn, C H G, and Deanna Garcia, from G G C. Consultants are Thurman Consulting, and our lead service provider is Central Valley Community Resources, C V C R, myself, and Arlene Figueroa Morales, our CFO. Our project type is permanent supportive housing. Our target population is unhoused or at-risk individuals and families, including transitional age youth or T A, veterans, and low-barrier mental health clients, behavioral mental health clients. Our project overview, Central Valley Community Resources, Inc., C V C R, in collaboration with the city of Riverbank and experienced housing partners, is developing a Riverbank residential home village, a sixty-seven unit permanent, permanent supportive housing community design to provide dignified A D A accessible homes and comprehensive wraparound services. The project will serve individuals and families experiencing or at risk of homelessness with a focused commitment to transitional age youth, aging out of foster care, veterans, and those referred by behavioral health of Stanislaus County with low-barrier mental health. Funding and support. The city of Riverbank has committed one point five million in matching funds via, uh, the state bill three twenty-two from Senator Eggman. C V C R is requesting Home Keep Plus funding to support acquisition and phase one and phase two construction. A two-point-eight-eight acre-
Darlene, is it okay? Can I ask a question as we're going through here?
Yes.
Can we back up one slide there? Phase two, uh, is the goal still to have the, the services part of phase two in the construction?
Phase two is going to be the community, not community, but the service center.
Where the, where the services will be provided, correct?
Yes. Uh, a two-point-eight-eight acre vacant lot and a one-point-six-four acre parcel with an existing single-family home listed vacant at acquisition, and that required no tenant relocation. Merging of parcels to form a cohesive residential village with secure perimeter, fencing, internal roadways, and accessible landscaping per City of Riverbank standards. Construction of sixty-seven fully furnished units that are six hundred and forty-three square feet with two bedrooms, one bathroom, and eight A D A accessible. Underground utilities, stormwater capture and recycling, reclaimed water irrigation, streets, curves, and a six-foot masonry wall. Also, high-speed internet, air conditioning, private porches, and appliances in every unit. Phase two?
Sorry, Darlene.
Yes.
If we can back up one question, sorry. Uh, okay, so you, you're talking about site development here, uh, as of April seventh to now. Has the site plan been updated? To reflect the, the feedback from the pre-application process? Nothing's been changed on the site plan? Okay.
So it is still coming. Phase two, the supportive service center, will be funded through independent sources. Long-term operations will be sustained through Cal Aime, tenant-based vouchers, and other public-private partnerships. Phase two in the supportive services center will include a community room, kitchen, fitness center, computer lab, playground, gathering spaces, community garden, and a dog park. Supportive services. All services will be delivered in alignment with housing-first principles with no preconditions related to sobriety, employment, or income. A full-time, trauma-informed management team will ensure safety, stability, and program continuity. A restart program will be integrated with our empowered curriculum. All applicants will be screened through a coordinated entry system, better known as, in our county, as H M I S, and fingerprinted. Riverbank residents will be given first priority to apply through the H M I Fs, H M I S Coordinated Entry System. C V C R will work closely with the H M I S team of Stanislaus County and Riverbank Police Services to ensure applicants meet requirements to be housed in a family-oriented community.
I have a question on phase two. Um, what is the anticipated lead time? Because this is a key component of the project, the support center. So what would the lead time look like on getting phase two started? Um, construction takes a long time, so what's, what are we looking at as far as time goes? A year, six months?
I would say, um, probably six months, but in the meantime-
The break ground.
The break ground.
Okay.
And in the meantime, we can always take one of our units and use that as the supportive, uh, service center. We don't necessarily have to have the brick up and going, because our, if our residents are there, they need to have the supportive services.
And do you have a planned delegated unit for that yet, or is that just kind of?
That's the plan. That's the plan. Yeah.
So Darlene, just to kind of follow up here, so it's saying we're going to prioritize Riverbank residents. How, how, I've never seen that in the county where you're allowed to kind of do that. That would kind of show bias and preference to us, even though obviously that's, that, that would be preferred, right? But it's state grants, so how are you guys gonna accomplish that?
Partnerships that have already been established. And we've been talking about it, and so far, it's a go.
I appreciate that. If you could elaborate, kind of elaborate on the partnerships?
Well, it's the partners that we, we, um, collaborate with every day as we, uh, see our clients in the T A and, um, throughout the county. So it's not just, I mean, it's not just, you know, the, the T A youth, but we also have young adults that are seeing behavioral health, seeing, um, you know, we've already talked with H M I S, and we, we already have established the partnerships to try to get our Riverbank residents involved.
What groups?
If they're interested.
What groups specifically have you been talking to and working out these partnerships with?
Some, some of the members of the C S O C committee, some of the members of the Shaw. Community impact, provide, promote, create, reduce, and serve. So we want to provide a safe, A D A accessible, affordable housing, promote health, wellness, and economic mobility. We want to create local jobs and resident workforce opportunities. We want to reduce pressure on emergency services by offering stability. And we want to serve as a reciprocal model for smaller cities addressing homelessness with dignity and innovation. On-site amenities, a bike-walking trail, private internal road, a secure gated vehicle access with secondary fire maintenance access. A few facts. So according to Stanislaus County twenty twenty four Affordable Housing Needs Report, um, sixteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine low-income renter households in Stanislaus County do not have access to an affordable home. State and federal funding for housing production and preservation in Stanislaus County has increased seventy percent from the year prior. And renters in Stanislaus County need to earn twenty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents per hour, which is one point eight times the state minimum wage to afford the average monthly asking rent of one thousand, five hundred and nineteen. And I feel like that that number has gone up greatly as far as the monthly rent. A bit about C V C R, Central Valley Community Resources, who we are. We're a nonprofit organization dedicated to serving vulnerable youth, families, and seniors throughout California Central Valley. The organization was founded over eleven years ago by a board of directors who are passionate community leaders committed to empowering young people to transition from foster care into healthy, independent adulthood. C V C R's housing programs are state-licensed and built on close, long-term partnerships with county social services, healthcare providers, and behavioral health specialists. Through these collaborations, C V C R's staff ensures that every youth receives wraparound support and access to essential resources.
Have you guys reached out to behavioral health and received some kind of support letter? I know Ben Rubin's now the director there. Have you guys kind of reached out, uh, reintroduced yourself to the new director and, and gotten some kind of, like, where, where, you guys got a letter of support? Okay.
Uh, these homes offer more than a roof. They provide structure, support, and skills for life. Residents receive personalized guidance in life skills and household management, financial education, employment readiness, and job training, goal-setting accountability, and personal development. Our community presence. So we have for, I can't tell you how many years, because I've lost count, but the popular annual health and safety fun fair bike rodeo in partnership with the city of Riverbank, Riverbank Police Services, community partners, and sponsors. We have given away free bikes that are given to Riverbank residents. And last year, I think we had close to thirty bikes, I do believe. And, um, it's always a joy to see the kids win not only bikes, but just special prizes. We always try to make sure everybody has a, they will get, walk away with something. And last year, our focus was on bicycle safety. And so we had, um, the, um, children to walk around to all of our booths that we had and get something for safety. Each booth would either had some, a giveaway or an activity involving around bicycle safety. Toys for Tots toy giveaway with the Marines partnership and also with Casa Del Rio and community sponsors. Last year was our first year for Breakfast with Santa. It was a great success. We had, uh, a lot of volunteers to make that happen. And I do believe that, um, with having Santa and Mr. and Mrs. Santa, The Grinch, and all of our volunteers, it was very successful, and the food was good, too. Uh, our annual toy drive and car show, and like I said, the Breakfast with Santa and, uh, with our community partners. These pictures are just a, a snapshot of some of the activities. Um, in your far left is our, um, we have the senior brunch Friday, every senior citizen, uh, brunch every Friday. And on the left is the students from the culinary arts department who prepare, uh, the meals for our senior citizen. Um, they are learning to, learning how to cook. They're learning how to put menus together, and then I go and pick it up and bring it back to our senior citizens. And we give them feedback. Food is usually really, really good. Um, picture on the right is just a group of our senior citizens, and every Friday, we will have bingo. And they look forward to having bingo. And, and also, maybe, um, every couple of months, I have a guest speaker to come out to talk about safety, to talk about, um, I think we had someone from, uh, public health, and, um, just giving out just whatever we can to, to make sure that they stay informed. And the last picture on the bottom is, uh, some pictures from our bicycle rodeo. Um, next. Also, as I just mentioned, our senior lunch program at the community center in collaboration with our culinary arts, uh, class from Riverbank Unified School District. We also offer a scholarship to the students at the end of the school year. We also provide free income tax filing services for low-income residents and the elderly. We also provide holiday food and gifts to our residential care homes. We, uh, participate and do giveaways for the National Lights On for the Riverbank Unified School District. We also, um, do, uh, the National Night Out with giveaways and, uh, Love Riverbank, the cookie dis, uh, distribution, where we honor our heroes and our first responders. Uh, some other annual fundraiser and events, uh, we have our annual craft feed, our fireworks stand, haunted hayride, Dia de los Muertos, Cheese and Wine Festival, and our Christmas parade. And there's some pictures from those activities. In twenty twenty-four, we were, uh, fortunate to be and, and very grateful to be honored the, um, nonprofit of the year for twenty twenty-four as a nonprofit. And we just want to say thank you for allowing us to be a community partner since twenty eleven. Thank you.
Darlene, if we can back up, sorry. Sorry if there were going to be, I didn't want to interrupt if anybody was going to be clapping. Sorry about that. Uh, if we can back up to C V C R, who we are. Right, uh, so right here. So the, I've kind of been following the posts, and it was mentioned that there's an agreement with, uh, with, uh, my luck, uh, Cambridge Academy, sorry, I'm blanking over here. Uh, discuss a little bit about that. Have you guys reached out with them, made an agreement? What, what's that look like?
Yes, we are about to be, uh, the train to trainers for the restart program. So we have been attending classes for about a year now at the restart, with the restart program. So like I said, we're going to be the train to trainers, and we'll be taking our clients through the restart program, helping them to set goals, helping to see, leave your past behind and look for your future. Where would you like to be? And make goals and set goals so that you can see like what we saw earlier today, graduates that are ready to move on to, uh, improve their lives.
Okay. Go ahead. I got a, I got a ton more questions, so I'll just wait, I'll wait, I'll wait, I'll wait my turn.
Uh, mine is more to the supportive services center again. Um, so when we had met, uh, there was a lot of probably this or maybe this. Um, so my question is, since our meeting, have you guys discussed any partnerships? We mentioned Golden Valley Health Centers. Um, we've mentioned other partnerships with behavioral health, social services, the school district, but in Veterans Affairs. Um, so I'm just wondering what sort of conversations you've had since our meeting together, um, on how you're going to bring these services to life and how you're going to put pen to paper. And then you mentioned a calendar events. Do you have a tentative calendar events of what that's going to look like, what those partnerships are on those calendar? I mean, if the tiny homes are being constructed off-site and you're bringing them in, and the project site itself is shovel-ready, then you're looking at less than a year before you can start offering these services. And these partnerships aren't built overnight. So I'm just curious what sort of conversations have been had in the last few weeks since we met.
Well, we have commitment letters. We have commitment, uh, convers, we have had commitment conversations, and we've had, uh-
With who?
Look, with my head.
With who? Do you have any, did you bring any with you, or?
No, I didn't bring anything with me, no. But we have a psychiatrist who is willing to be on board as our lead, uh, behavioral health person. And we have, uh, we haven't really, well, we have talked to Golden Valley and have talked to, uh, who else? Need some help here. Yeah, the county behavioral health. Riverbank School District.
Could you come up if you're going to be speaking to some of this? Would you mind coming up for the microphone? I think there's some folks who can't hear in the back.
Yeah, so, um, the commitments have been from the school district. So Riverbank School District with their counselors and their behavioral health wraparound services that they already have. Some of those are through Golden Valley Health Centers as well. So, um, they work in King Junction. Um, then behavioral health, of course, has been supportive for a long time, bringing in counselors and the different programs that they have, as well as the programs that C V C R has been trained to do as well. bringing in counselors and the different programs that they have as well as the programs that CBCR has been trained to do as well.
Are you a board member of the organization?
I am a board member, yes.
So I think I have the same question as a couple other people in the audience. Um, Riverbank is a melting pot of school districts. So we hear Riverbank Unified a lot. But what about the students at Enox and USTAC, Stanislaus Union Charter Schools, private schools, homeschool even? So there, what are we doing to reach beyond Riverbank Unified if this is an inclusive project?
Right, so um, I contacted Enox two weeks ago. Um, they are a large, a large school district, right? Um, so we're still um, trying to figure those, those pieces out. Because some of the students may be going to Enox. Um, the way the lines are, are there, it's, it could go either way. Um, so we have contacted them. I really wanted to find out what their um, at-risk youth look like over at Enox and so they have um, about fifty students that they think are from Riverbank that could possibly be at risk. So um, working in conjunction with the schools and identifying students uh, that might be a part of this as well is part of what we're trying to do. Um, of course, the elementary school, I believe, is Sylvan um, for that area. And Sylvan's a little harder to get um, confirmation on.
Have you talked to Stanislaus County Office of Education who has oversight of all of these school districts and the charter schools?
So I actually work in the, and it's in with them and so they can't necessarily say you need to talk to these people to do this. That's not what they do.
Okay. I, I think that the problem that I'm having is this is happening within the last two weeks. This project has been on our table since January. So, and like I said, it's shovel-ready. Tiny homes off-site, they come, they're on the ground within less than a year. And these, this is a big project. This is a lot of people that we're bringing into Riverbank. So it doesn't seem like there's been a lot of groundwork done.
So I think there's a misconception and to be, uh, we've had these relationships prior to January. The, this project has been in this area since January, December. Um, so the, the partnerships have been ongoing, to be honest, for years. Um, when I was with Public Health and the UC, we continuously did work with all of these partners. So um, I guess that's part of maybe not, not being as clear that these are ongoing partnerships, not newly created partnerships. Yes, thank you.
Do you state your name and your involvement with the project?
Arlene Figueroa Morales. And I'm a board member as well as the CFO for Central Valley Community Resources. Um, I want to try to answer some of your questions, Stacy, as far as um, the school districts and the Stanislaus County of Education. So we currently already have relationship with the Stanislaus County of Education through the programs that we offer right now as far as our transitional housing. And we have already like kind of put a, a filler on, you know, how we would be able to help with this type of project. Um, as well as speaking with the county, we currently work with the aged-out foster youth. So we have already had um, conversations with the county who says they can't wait to see something like this come about. Um, we haven't specifically said that um, you know, that we are ready to start our project and when. We can only give them a date when we thought we were gonna do this a year ago. But then our land got taken away. Um, so we're now at the part where we're, we're trying to go for a grant. And we have done a lot of legwork that needed to be done basically to go for the grant. Once the grant is in place, there will be a lot more. Um, but as far as relationships, we also have relationships with the other, what's the other mental health place?
Telecare.
Telecare. So already and telecare um, does a lot of clinician work, um, therapy work. And they, they're willing to come to site and do that as well as we can refer out and people can go to their office. So we already have some of those relationships in place and we'll just, this project will just be a part of that.
So, so there are quite a few questions I think we all have. Um, did you want to finish the last couple slides of your presentation?
That's it.
Okay. Okay, um, any other questions?
Yes, 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 yes. Okay. So, so I kind of want to address some of the comments from, from, from the, from the audience. Um, we are a hundred percent supportive of some type, right? Some type of permanent supportive housing, transitional housing. That's, that's why we were able to secure the one point five million from Senator Eggman. That is its sole purpose and use for that funding. Uh, we were at Sierra House today and I'm gonna brag about it. I was gonna do it during public comment, but I'm gonna do it right now only because I have a ni- a nice large crowd here. So this, so this is, there are three graduates, right, from Sierra House, right? And so they went through a bunch of workforce training. They graduated today and this is just some of the work that they've been working on for, for about six to eight months of training. Uh, one graduated with honors. The other two ha- one has a job already and the other one has, has a, is an entrepreneur and has a game plan for that, right? And so, so so, so that's the kind of stuff, like we are absolutely a hundred percent supportive. Uh, Sierra House is exactly what we're looking for. So I, I think uh, Councilmember Call was kind of, kind of alluding to um, is there's some shortfalls uh, with, with the applicant. I, we are supportive of a project. I feel like this application process has kind of vetted out a ton of shortfalls. Um, site plan, that, that's a, that's a pretty easy, uh, from April seventh to now, nothing has been done. No site plan, no updates and we're considering fee waivers and we don't even know what that's gonna look like. We, you gotta have additional parking setbacks. Or do you have to go two stories to meet your sixty-seven units? None of that was presented today and that's something that could have been done in one meeting um, from April seventh to now. And so that's, that's a pretty huge set, uh, shortfall in my opinion. Um, I'm glad to hear that you, you have the letter of support of behavioral health and recovery. I know I mentioned Ben Rubin for some reason. He's not our planning. I, I meant Ben Imperial, so don't tell Ben Rubin I was thinking about him today. Um, oh my God, did I do it again? Oh my Lord. Anyways, sorry. I got a lot going through my head. I got a lot of notes here, so let me see if I can get through this. Okay. Uh, so like I said, so we are a hundred percent supportive of this project. We have Sierra House who is graduating our homeless and they need somewhere to go, right? And so we need a transitional or we need a permanent supportive housing. So that is the goal. We, we will reach it. We will get there. So here's the problem with the project though. So I think there's been a lack of PR. There's been a lack of outreach. Uh, the confidence um, has been dropping. I'm, I'm only speaking for myself. Like, this is a big project. Like the council member said, this is a massive project and the confidence has to be through the roof with this. Especially being by a park, especially next week, it's gonna be finalized for a school site there. Like that's, that's, that's in the works. That's happening. Um, you guys mentioned budget gap concerns. That's a, that's a big shortfall, right? And so, and then, and that's the main reason for the fee request here. Uh, responsiveness. I know there's been several uh, residents. I can only imagine the inbox of the rep in the district, Stacy Call. Uh, as far as the lack of responsive is, lack of clarification, lack of uh, I know you guys mentioned you guys are, you guys are, you guys got feelers out there, but we actually need commitments is what, what Stacy's looking for, right? What, what we're all looking for. Um, and what, regardless of what kind of happens here, right? And so if, if I, I, I do want to address the another location comment. Um, we're looking for a quality project regardless of where it's at in the city, right? If it's managed well, right? It's doing what it's supposed to do. I would be happy to have it in my district. I know the rest of the councils, council members would be, would love to have it in their district to showcase that, yeah, this is how you do it. And it can be done, right? Um, so where I'm at, um, we've already had state kind of already has expressed interest and approved uh, the Sierra House, like they absolutely love it. I would actually um, will not be supporting the fee waivers in its entirety. Uh, the PLHA as well. I would actually like to see the PLHA go a hundred percent to Sierra. And then we general fund the rest because there will be a shortfall there. So if, if I can just, I, I'm just gonna finish. Um, so that's where I'm at. Um, it has nothing to do with what the project is geared for or is intended for. They, we all know there's people that need the help. We, we all know that. And it has to happen and, and it has to happen, of course, in the city of Riverbank. Uh, but for this, uh, I am not gonna be supporting it.
So I'm, I just have a couple of comments. Um, I am with Luis where I do have some concerns about CDCVR getting everything together to get this project off the ground and running. It concerns me, but I've heard today about the community center. That should be up and running before anybody's in the house. Um, the, a couple of other things that I want to have the public hear that I've been seeing in my emails and online is number one. There is no funding given to you specifically from the City of Riverbank General Fund. Is that a correct statement? From the general fund?
We didn't, we didn't ask for that.
Because there, these are comments that are being made online and I want to make sure that the public hears from you and us that there has been no public funds from the City of Riverbank General Fund. The only thing they've gotten right now is the grant that was from the state. Okay, I want to make sure everybody understands that. The other thing is there's been some comments about possibly city council being involved. At this point, do you have anybody from city council on any of your boards? Okay. Um, again, I'm with Luis. I support the project. I think it's a great idea. Um, it's permanent housing. There's transitional is, is not what it is. It's, the only ra- reason it's transitional is for the kids coming out of um, foster care. But I think it's a great project. Do have some concerns about the community center not being up and running before it opens. Um, I don't support all of the fees. Um, I've, I had a conversation with you guys before about which fees I would support. I'm with him about the, the one fees. I think you should go to the Sierra House after seeing it today. Um, amazing, amazing location. You did a dr- great job there. The other fees, I'm open to some reductions, but not the hundred percent that you're requesting. Thank you.
We met uh, I think two weeks ago. Vice Mayor and myself met with you. I haven't seen any of our questions answered. And um, I agree with a project like this. It's very important. But I am not comfortable supporting this.
Uh, so I was looking for more stability in the project when you guys came. Uh, Darlene, I sincerely express to you my understanding for a need for a project like this. I shared with you that my mother came from foster care. She was a single mom, so I get it. I, I know there's a need for this project and I support a project like this. But I just think there's a lot of gaps. And I mean, I have a relationship with my banker, but it doesn't mean I can go to him and say, I need a two million dollar loan. Will you partner with me on it? There's still a process that I have to go through and I have to build that and I have to schedule it and I have to show up for meetings and I have to advocate for myself or my business. So I understand having relationships, but it's bringing those relationships to life and applying them. So um, when we talked in March, I um, I, I told you guys, you articulated your message very well. Um, I wanted to see you guys do more workshops. Um, and then so it was extremely disheartening to see on social media the contradiction from CBCR and the project manager that they would start doing workshops after they were approved for the home key process. Because that was not the conversations that we had had in previous meetings upon approving the one and a half million dollar allocation. Uh, so therefore I will not be supporting any of the fee waivers.
So um, I mean, it's evident that you're passionate about the work you do. I mean, I saw you light up when you were speaking about the bicycle rodeo and the, the Friday breakfast and all the events that you're having and I, I think it's amazing. It's uh, we, we met various times, you know, and um, I, I feel the same way. I, you know, I, I will be, I'm openly supportive of affordable housing and and supporting our underserved communities and and, and it got to a point where it was an intersection where something that's just as important to me is that community engagement that um, wasn't happening. Um, we asked for different things like uh, an example of what the intake will look like so that we can get reassurance on the prioritizing of Riverbank residents, but we haven't received that yet. Um, I asked a few times about the long-term operations and funding plan. And um, you know, this is the first time I'm kind of seeing it on paper. Um, what else? I mean, uh, I just, in, in theory, I love this project and like the other council members have suggested. I will want to work together and closely with our community to create a project that we're all confident in. Um, at this point with the fee waivers, I, I would be open if there's a motion to discussing some amended version, but as presented, um, you know, I'm, I'm not confident supporting it at this time. Um, if there's any more comments or questions from council, otherwise I'm gonna open it for a public hearing. Public comments. Yes, yeah. Okay. Is this a gavel situation? Um, so we're gonna start public comment and it's gonna be specifically for the fee waivers. And we're gonna have our city clerk uh, manage the flow here.
Well, I did have a speech, but I think that's a little bit out the door now. Um, but I do want to comment on the fact that I do appreciate that you listen to the community of looking at the facts of, there's many layers to this project. And I really appreciate the research, you know, the conversations. But I do want to say that I know that it looks like we're completely opposed to helping people or, you know, it's above the surface. But it's much deeper than that because from my background, I have worked at a foster youth, um, actually housing. I have while, actually in San Jose worked for a very prominent nonprofit called the Bill Wilson Center. And I organized at the city of San Jose a fashion show years ago. Um, at, in the, you know, big, super like brand-new city hall when it was brand-new at that time. But I do want to mention that I want it to make sense. And I'm glad that you are kind of, you know, diving deep into understanding like the community can't even find the resources. As someone who is educated, I like really was kind of confused on just trying to find the resources for CBCR. And I really think that you should update your website as just a basis. Um, and just showcase all of the stories and the things that you presented in this presentation. Because this presentation has been updated and initially when we came on March eleventh as a community, I didn't really see that showcase. I do like the pictures and I do like everything that you're doing. However, it's not showcased to your best of your ability. And I would like to have more transparency of like, how are you really impacting? I mean, also the fact of the matter is where is your transitional housing? I know that from talking to the council members, they were able to get some information to tell some of us on where they're located in San Joaquin, but that's not Stan- I mean, I guess it's not Stanislaus, so I just wanted more information so you can be transparent with the community. And also I want to emphasize that this isn't about, you know, with aged-out foster youth. That's very important. But I do want to preface that this is really more about proposition one and how the city needs to realize the support that it needs in order to be successful. And also looking at the data if it makes sense, you know? Um, I want that to know that the Home Key Plus has the number one thing is like the veterans and homelessness and then the mental health challenges and um, the substance use. In talking about how you were asking about the partnerships, I was very interested to hear on what those were and I really appreciate that you're asking for the commitment, showing the raw data, the letters of support. That's really important so we can understand that those conversations really actually happened. I mean, when you present those, you know, facts, then, you know, you have a better case. And I don't want to have any bad blood about anything about the project, but it's just realistic as far as how you're opening Riverbank to like, it's more of a risk than a benefit without looking at the bigger picture and the many complex layers that is involved in this project. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Jack Sandu?
Hi. Good evening, City Council. Uh, Jack Paul Sandu. I'm a resident here in Crossroads West. Just like Mary Chris, I had a different speech prepared as well. So first of all, thank you all for hearing our concerns, responding to my personal emails I sent you. Um, I think it's really important that you hear from your taxpayers, your voters, your citizens. This isn't about rich versus poor. Um, I've worked my butt off to get to where I'm at, to afford a home, to pay my mortgage, to pay taxes, to make ends meet. It's not about that. We all support helping others, but putting a roof over someone's head is not the root, is not the solution to a root cause. There's a systemic problem in the United States. I'm a healthcare professional. My background, individuals with substance use disorders, behavioral health issues. It's hard to take care of those people in acute care facilities where there's doctors and nurses and pharmacists and medications. How is an organization like this that hasn't even vetted out and like planned this strategically, gonna take care of these kinds of people? So thank you for listening to us.
Connect your comment to the fee waiver item?
Oh, sorry about that.
And, and I just want to proceed that way.
Yeah. I want to say, um, 2.1 million is just probably the beginning they're gonna ask for. Like we've all seen, they haven't strategically mapped this out or planned this out. There's probably going to be more money they're gonna be asking for. Um, a question for the city council and probably this organization is at what point will that come from taxpayer dollars? Because I know there's a component from, um, the Home Key Plus grant and as well some, as some of the money that you got from the Senator Aigman Fund. Um, and I think on March 11th, one of their key reasonings for the fee waiver was using energy efficient and water efficient appliances. But I have those appliances in my home and so does probably the rest of everyone else in this room. I mean, are you gonna waive our utility fees as well? Because we have those appliances? So, sorry. That's all I have. Thank you all.
Thank you. And just a reminder, this is regarding the fee waiver item as we continue public comment.
Right, hon?
Wanted to clarify some things. This is about the fee waiver. I'm not gonna talk about all the other stuff that we just talked about. But, uh, the fee waiver is a common thing that's done. Our consultant, uh, consults in many different jurisdictions. And it's what it takes for, it's part of the partnership between the, the entity that is the city or the county and the service care provider. So that's a, it's a pretty normal thing. What it does, uh, and I have the, how the fee waiver works out to where that's what helps us get to the spot where we can actually move to the next step where we can do the site work and things like that. The one thing that I wanted to clarify too is that Home Key does, it's, this is all government money. It's all our taxpayer money. So to say that the general fund's different is, doesn't make any sense. But, um, 90%, we can stipulate 90% of all residents. This will be residents of the City of Riverbank, regardless of where they come from, from what school district, from whatever. And we checked on that and, uh, I'm working on another project in another city. That's, that's the stipulation going in to with the developer. It has to be 90% of the, of the folks. So it's not, I mean, the goal isn't to bring a bunch of people to Riverbank. The goal is help people in Riverbank. And that's what I think this is. What happens from here, if, if you choose to reduce fee waivers, uh, that's a one-to-one match from the state because it's like bringing your own money to the table. It'll make it so that we'll have a deficit of somewhere between 140,000 and about 5 million, almost 5 million. So that, it, on all practical purposes, you know, kills the project. Uh, there will be home, home key funding, we believe, next year in similar applications as they are now. And, uh, it, and so if, if there is, we did, we, this, this group did go through an RFP process to get to this spot. We just, they didn't just walk off the street. They went through an RFP process and won the RFP and then came through and here we are today. And, uh, I know that there's some things that need to be done and I appreciate what you're saying. But I just wanted to be the, with respect to the fee waiver by, um, reducing that number, that just goes against our ability to, to perform the project at, at the level that we do. So, any questions?
Thank you.
Mark Heifinger? Is that you ma'am? Oh, I'm calling on Mark Heifinger. No, no, you're, no, no, no. Mark Heifinger? I think he made a public comment earlier. So let me really quickly clarify. Mr. Tucker, do you want to make another comment? Okay. Ms. Linda? Melina? Michael? Is there a Michael? Okay.
Evening, Mayor and everybody, um, city council members. Thanks for, uh, all your time tonight. I know it's been a long day for a lot of you. I also want to thank, uh, council member Colin, council member Yodibay for meeting with my neighbors and I, um, multiple times to discuss, to hear our concerns. I'm opposing the fee waivers because of the location of the project. I've never been against helping homeless people. If anybody really knows me, they know where I am at every other Friday with the Second Harvest Food Bank. I'm loading food trunk, food trucks and sticking groceries and homeless people's, uh, shopping bags or backpacks or cars, trunks of cars. So it's just this location I feel is wrong. I don't, I don't even think, you know, waivers should be considered. There shouldn't be anything like this near a school, a future Sylvan K-38 school, um, and a, um, sports complex. On a side note about Sylvan District, I spoke with two school board members today and they were unhappy that nobody from CBCR had contacted them and reached out to them about, um, this. And they're planning on finishing, right, finalizing a deal for a K-38 school. So, um, I want to thank you again for all your time, um, you know, for hearing our comments and concerns. And the last thing is, uh, my neighbors, where were you January 28th? I was the only one here. Yeah, geez, you know, um. But yeah, if, um, again, again, thank you for all your time. And it's been a long day for a lot of you. So have a great night.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, we did receive, um, several public comments in writing. So I'm gonna read one of them now so I can alternate between the people in the chamber and me reading all, all at once. So the first one we received was from Ms. Sue Barnes, um, in opposition to the fee waiver. Mayor, council members, my name is Sue Barnes and I'm writing to express my deep concerns as well as those of many fellow residents regarding the proposed tiny home project currently under consideration in Riverbank. While we support compassionate and effective solutions to homelessness, this specific proposal is not aligned with the needs or capacity of our community. It presents serious concerns in several areas. Scale mismatch. The project proposes 67 units, potentially housing over 400 individuals. Yet according to the 2024 count, only 28 unhoused individuals reside in Riverbank. This raises the likelihood of bringing in populations from outside the area without adequate local infrastructure or resources. The lack of community engagement. The nonprofit leading this effort has declined invitations to meet with residents and failed to attend public events such as the Parks and Recreation and Chamber of Commerce egg hunt. This avoidance reflects a troubling lack of transparency and community partnership. Inadequate planning. There are no confirmed partnerships with experienced service providers. Supportive services and a community center. Vital elements of a successful support model have been deferred to an undefined phase two. These services should be in place from the start, not as an af, not as an afterthought. Financial concerns. This organization has already requested fee waivers from the city. Based on the incomplete nature of the plan, we believe this will not be the last financial request made, placing a potential long-term burden on the city and the taxpayers. Additionally, it is important to recognize that the Riverbank voters rejected proposition one. Pushing this project forward in any form not only dismisses, dismisses community concerns, but also contradicts the will of the elec, local electoral. For these reasons, I respectfully urge the council to vote no on the fee waiver request and reconsider any partnership with CBCR at this time. We need solutions that are thoughtfully planned, financially sustainable and developed in true, in true collaboration with the community. Thank you for your time, service and commitment to making the best decisions for Riverbank.
And then here in the chamber, uh, Uthbal?
Hello. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, my name is Uthbalinamdar. I'm a physician here living in Riverbank and, uh, I want to, I want to join my, my fellow citizens in opposing the fee waiver. CBCR, they've not demonstrated, uh, the capacity to manage a project of this size and complexity, let alone with those in our, the demographic that, you know, they want to serve. There are no confirmed partnerships as, as we learned through your questioning with experienced service providers and key components of the proposals such as supportive services and, uh, community center have been pushed to this like phase two process, which is kind of this vague, amorphous thing that they couldn't really explain. So I think this is kind of risky, uh, not good to do in the long term. If the residents are moving in during phase one, then support services must be in place on day one, not built later. A community center and the wraparound care that's required, including physicians, psychiatrists, social services, educational services, uh, for this, for this, uh, young people and the students, they must be there on day one. So, um, delaying these services sets the project up for failure. This is huge, complicated, you know, multi-50-year project, millions of dollars on the line. And so if they fail, that puts those individuals in the project at risk in the tiny homes and the surrounding community. And so I respectfully ask you to vote no on the fee waiver and strongly urge you not to work with CBCR in the future. There's a certain sloppiness and lack of detail that I think you need to take into account in your future dealings with them. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I'll read another written comment. This is from Ms. Lisa Potter. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Lisa and I am here in the audience tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to have my voice heard. I'm here to voice my strong opposition to the 2.1 million fee waiver being requested for the CBCR tiny home project. Let us be, let's be clear. This is not a small-scale solution tailored to Riverbank's needs. According to the 2024 point in time count, our city, our city currently has 28 homeless individuals. Yet this project proposes 67 units, enough for over 300 residents. That's more than 10 times the number of people we're aiming to help. We are not addressing homelessness anymore. We're building a magnet. By creating this oversized development, we're not solving a local issue. We're inviting a regional one. Riverbank risks becoming a destination for people from other cities dealing with far more severe homelessness, mental health and substance abuse challenges. That may be well-intentioned, but it will overwhelm our services, our schools, our law enforcement and our community. This project is being funded and promoted by outside groups, but it's our city that will be, that will bear the long-term consequences. A 2.1 million fee waiver is a significant financial ask. Money that could go towards supporting local law enforcement, public safety, infrastructure or real solutions that directly support Riverbank residents. We all want to show compassion, but compassion also means creating solutions that are responsible, sustainable and in proportion to the actual needs of our community. I urge you to please say no to the fee waiver request. Riverbank's resources in future, future should be focused on helping our own, not accommodating a project far beyond what our community needs or asks for. Thank you.
The audience, Rosalind Chandra, do you still want to make a comment?
Good evening, city leaders. Uh, my name's Rosalind Chandra. Thank you for letting me speak again. And I'm just here also to, um, oppose the fee waiver that is brought to the table today. I want to thank you guys so far for hearing our voices. That means a lot. You know, we, as a community, we care. We come from a lot of different backgrounds. Military, you know, low income, single moms. We're not here to work against you. We're here to work with you. When you guys bring on a project that's gonna help, you know, this special group of people, this population, this potential neighbors, we would help, we would be involved. But we feel like we're not being heard. We feel like this is kind of being slipped under the table. We feel like things aren't planned well, managed well. A lot of us are healthcare workers. We're professionals. We have kids. We have families. We get it to be, you know, underserved, to have needs. You don't think that we too would rise to help? You don't think that we too would be involved with community events? You don't think that we too would be involved with outreaches? Work with us. Don't work against us. We don't feel that CBCR is the right fit for a project like this. We don't feel that our community is the right fit for this because we do feel it like it'll be a pilot program. Something like this has never been brought about to Riverbank. And you already have 12 existing tiny homes being built in the area and then you're gonna unload 67 more. There's gonna be a great impact in that one location directly. It's gonna affect all of us permanently, who knows how long? So I thank you for hearing us. I thank you for, um, considering our concerns. And again, we as a community, we are here to work with you guys. We are here to work for the City of Riverbank. We're here to work for everyone in the City of Riverbank. We care too. We've come from rough backgrounds, but you know what? We're here and we want to help, you know, our fellow persons stand to make it. We know what it's like. But a project of this magnitude, it requires great, um, experience, background, funding, a lot of logistics. And we don't feel confident that any of this is presented. I myself have had an aunt that had mental illness. She's married. She lived in a home. She had a family. The trials I've seen her go through, being off meds, on meds, on one med it helps, but guess what? Weight gain happens. She gets off the meds. She has another breakdown. It's just off and on, off and on until the final mental breakdown comes again and again. It's not easy, you know, for her case manager, her doctors, her family, for her to be managed. How is a nonprofit that doesn't have much experience in this area gonna manage such a big magnitude of a project? So we just ask you to please keep your mind open. Please continue hearing us and, um, continue work, working with us. We thank you guys for your time.
I have another written comment from, um, Wendy Victoria. My name is Wendy. I am writing strongly to urge you to vote no on the proposed 2.1 million fee waiver for CBCR. As a nonprofit seeking a significant public subsidy, CBCR has shown a lack of transparency and respect for our community. They have not done the necessary outreach to inform or involve the public, nor have they made the effort to meet with us directly. These are not minor oversights. They are fundamental, fundamental failures in accountability and community engagement. Waiving 2.1 million in fees is not a small gesture. It's a substantial investment of taxpayer resources. Before considering such a break, the, the organization should have proven its commitment to partnering with the public and earning our trust. So far, they have done neither. Rewarding that kind of neglect, negligence sets a dangerous precedent. I ask you to hold CBCR to the same standard we would expect of any organization seeking public support. Do the work, earn the trust and show up for the community. Please vote no on the fee waiver.
And then Olivia in the chamber?
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and everyone here. I actually had, um, wanted to go and say that I wanted to support the fee waiver because this is the reason why. There are funds that were specifically set aside for this type of development that's supposed to help with the, um, the home affordability and, and that certain grant that we got from, you know, our council, um, representative. So that's kind of why I was going with this. Um, also, I know that prior to this, um, prior to this spot where they were supposed to be located when it got moved, there was another location that CBCR had that they did have a lot more of the information, um, set to go. And it was prior to, a lot of people that were up here, like Rachel was here and, you know, Luis was here, up here during some of those presentations. Um, they did not get to use that site because that site turned into a park. So I know that I remember seeing at that point in time, I saw a lot more information at that time. So I don't know if moving it to this spot is part of what happened with them not getting all their information up fast because they're in a new spot. And I'm not part of CBCR, but I know that they've done a lot of good things for our community. Now, I know that as far as we needed something like this here for sure, for our Riverbank people. Those 28 people that keep showing up with statistics, they must be the people that are down by the river, that are making my life a heck. Because those aren't the same people that CBCR is talking about taking care of. I will tell you that as a realtor, I sell houses. I don't have property management. But I get more calls on people who, um, are having a problem with paying their rent. In our town, um, I just did a ager yard thing the other day, um, after the, um, after the Easter egg hunt. In our town, I just did a egg or yard thing the other day after the, after the Easter egg hunt. I bought eggs, my husband and I, and filled them and delivered to houses to help the Easter bunny in the middle of the night. And a couple of those people asked me about helping them find a home to rent. And the price range that they're in to find a home, we don't have that here. So things like that, we definitely need to make sure that we know that there are people here that need it, they're just not on these statistics and they're not on the last consensus. It's people that are still here, living in Riverbank that need help. And those are just two people from the other day. I get calls probably two to three times a week from people that are looking for affordable housing to rent in our town and they don't have it. So we need to do something, whether it is this project or not, and with whatever money we can get to help with making some kind of affordable housing here in our town because it's not those 28 people that are messing with my listing on Highway 108. It is the people who, their children are going to our schools. One lady had seven kids that I ate her yard the other day and was asking for help with finding a house. So we need to look at something. If that means that CBCR needs some guidance to come back to a different spot, whether it's this spot or not, and working with maybe a council member that wants to take that on with them, who has all the information they need to help them, because I know they're kind of rebuilding, and again, I don't know their process, I think they have to get approval for a fee waiver for some of the stuff to take place and go forward and move from that. That would be something you have to ask, but I do ask, everybody here wants to help everybody, right? So with helping everybody, why don't you guys, some, I mean, you don't think CBCR has everything that they need? But maybe some of you guys have the information you can bring to help them get their stuff kicked off or partner with another organization where it's two organizations partnering together so we can get the resource we have for people that do need this help, whether it is in
Olivia, can I ask you to address your counsel, please?
Oh, sorry. So whether it's to, to help out, not in this area or not, but I'm just asking for everybody to help. Everybody wants to help, then do it. What can you do to help the people that we have that are in our town that can't afford to live here? It's not the 28 on the consensus, it's the ones that are calling me all the time and maybe some of your family members that are living with you, or whatever the case is, just we need to help those people. So whether it's getting a fee waiver for CBCR or helping them to get to the point where they need to, or whether they're partnering with someone else, or someone here can help with that, there is a need for some of this assistance out there. So, thank you.
Counsel, I have another one in writing from Mr. Sal Galivan. Dear Council members, my name is Sal and I am here with you today with a large group of my community members who are firmly opposed to this project. We respectfully urge you to vote no on the proposed 2.1 million fee waiver for the tiny home initiative. As I've stated in prior public comments, I have firsthand experience with this kind of project in our community. These developments, while well-intentioned, have historically brought increased crime, safety issues, and instability, especially when serving individuals with complex needs related to severe mental illness and substance abuse, as outlined in, under Proposition 1. The nonprofit behind this proposal has, has no proven track record in managing populations with these high levels of need. Handing over the safety and well-being of our children, elderly, and broader neighborhood to a small, untested organization is a risk we simply cannot afford. Beyond safety, there are serious fire risks associated with these types of structures. Reports from cities like Los Angeles and Oakland have shown that tiny home villages are highly vulnerable to fires due to the proximity of units, flammable materials, and inconsistent oversight. In L.A., a 2022 fire destroyed multiple units in a tiny home village in North Hollywood, displacing residents and endangering first responders. Oakland has seen similar incidents with inadequate fire prevention protocols leading, leading to entire encampments burning down. Are we truly prepared for that here? What happens when one small electrical issue turns into a neighborhood-wide disaster? Is our fire department equipped? Are our tax dollars meant to be literally burned? And let's be honest, if something goes wrong, the lawsuits will come, the city will be held responsible. This is not just a financial risk, it's a moral and legal one. This is not the right project, not the right location, and not the right approach. Please vote no on this tiny home proposal under Proposition 1 funding. Thank you for your time and consideration. And then I have in the chamber Pam Esparsa?
Evening, Pam Esparsa, I am a resident here in Riverbank. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I do want to say I support fee waivers, whether it's this project or another project, because fee waivers is what makes these projects affordable. I've been involved in many supportive housing, permanent supportive housing projects, and trying to put the funding together, the layered funding and complicated funding that goes into these projects is, is complicated. The developers need all the help that they can get. I, I like that you guys, and I commend you for doing your due diligence and, and really vetting out the projects because that's what your job is, so thank you for doing that. I did want to say too that, you know, I, I came here to hear about the project. I came here to, you know, listen to my community because what I was seeing is a lot of NIMBYism-type verbiage and, you know, not in my backyard. I really support affordable permanent housing in this community and in every community because there are layers of affordability and housing that needs to be built in all communities. That is the only thing that's going to solve homelessness, or people experiencing homelessness. I, you know, there's things, you know, it's, this is, you know, harming, I've, I've heard all kinds of things. It's harming the city, you know, not all persons experiencing homelessness are criminals. We stereotype people and that, you know, is evident by listening to some of the comments. It's people who need help. I know, I know of people with mental illness who are family members, who have families, who could benefit from affordable housing. These are veterans who are disabled. A gentleman said, you know, can I have a fee waiver too because I have, you know, his electric appliance? Some people can't work because they're so disabled. We have veterans that are disabled and can't work. So I just, you know, we're not on the same level or playing field, so I don't understand that. Also, looking at statistics, people are throwing out all kinds of statistics. Riverbank's poverty rate is 11% higher than national average. So we need affordable housing. Happy that you guys are looking at affordable housing and just make it the right project, so, thank you.
I have another one in writing from Ms. Katrina Kachery. My name is Katrina, I am physically here with my community, but I ask that this message be read. I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed tiny home project for Proposition 1 individuals, as well as to urge you to deny the 2.1 million fee waiver request associated with it. I speak not only for myself, but on behalf of hundreds of concerned Riverbank residents who have come together to oppose this project. Initially, we gathered wet signatures, but once the word spread through social media, the response was overwhelming. We quickly transitioned to an online petition, and in just three days of digital collection, we received several hundred signatures, a clear reflection of the deep concern within our community. This project was originally introduced as a housing for foster youth aging out of the system, a cause that many residents were willing to support and which was approved by council. However, it has now shifted to serving individuals under Proposition 1 funding, which includes those with severe mental illness and substance abuse challenges. This is a significant and troubling change. It was not communicated transparently and residents feel misled. This bait and switch approach undermines public trust and causes the integrity of the project into question. While some individuals placed this housing, placed in this housing may be on the path to recovery, others may still be actively struggling. Relapses are a reality. Without proper structure, oversight, and resources in place, this, this could pose risks to both the individuals being housed and the surrounding community. Public safety and community stability must remain a top priority. With a degree in business finance and over 20 years of experience in accounting, I took the time to review CVR, CBCR's publicly available financial records. What I discovered is deeply troubling. CBCR has operated on an annual budget of around $400,000. They have run a deficit in four of the last five years. Their track record shows poor financial planning and a lack of fiscal discipline. How can we trust an organization that has struggled to manage a modest budget to suddenly take on a 20 million-plus project? What happens when inevitable, inevitable, inevitable costs overruns or delays arise? Will they turn to the city for additional taxpayer dollars? Will corners be cut as funds dwindle? And if the operation ultimately fails, will they simply walk away, leaving Riverbank with a poorly maintained and potentially hazardous site and damaged reputation? This is not just a financial issue, it's a matter of accountability and trust. Approving this waiver will send a dangerous message. That repeated financial mismanagement is not only tolerated, but rewarded. Without a strong, proven financial plan, it is not a question of if CBCR will return. Asking for more public money, it's when. Adding to the concern is CBCR's failure to engage with the community. Despite multiple requests from residents and encouragement from this very council, they have refused to meet with us or hold public forums. That kind of avoidance is unacceptable. Again, it shows a lack of transparency, a lack of respect, and a lack of readiness to manage a community-integrated project of this scale. We respectfully urge you to deny the 2.1 million fee waiver request and to protect the integrity of Riverbank's public funds. This city deserves partnerships built on clear communication, accountability, and financial responsibility. Not rushed decisions that jeopardize long-term development goals. We are, we are counting on you, City Council, to reflect the values and concerns of your constituents. Please make the responsible choice and vote no on this waiver. And then Dr. Teresa? Yep, okay. And then that's all I have for public comments in the chamber. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the fee waiver? Okay, I have two more in writing. Does one be on Zoom? Let's take that one. Number ending in 3108, can you please unmute? Phone number ending in 3108? Go ahead.
Hello? Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Because the city allocated 1.5 million from Senator Eggman to the CBRC, DBCR, excuse me. What happens to the money? Are you still obligated to use that for this project somewhere or somehow? And other, is anybody, the CB, CR, the city, council, are you still going to be looking for another area to put this project within the city? Thank you.
That is on Zoom. And then I have a comment from, a written comment from Kiran Sahota, I'm sorry. She muted? Um, the comment reads, my name is Kiran Sahota and I am a fellow resident of Riverbank. I am writing to you today to strongly urge you to decline the fee waiver for the tiny homes project proposed by CBCR. Furthermore, I have many concerns regarding this project and the nonprofit behind it. In my career as a registered nurse, I see patients with mental health behavioral issues as well as substance abuse disorders on a daily basis. I also have seen many who have been faced with these challenges grown, grown and overcome them, but then relapse. It takes a team of doctors, nurses, and pharmacists to help treat these individuals, especially when some are having depressive manic episodes as well as withdrawal symptoms. This project will not have these types of licensed professionals on site. Providing a roof over their head does not solve the underlying problems these individuals are facing. Congregating single mothers with children, people with substance abuse pasts, veterans with PTSD and foster youth aging out of the system is a, is a terrible melting pot, waiting for problems to happen. No amount of security gating and video surveillance, surveillance will keep these individuals, let alone the community, feel safe. This project has not been, has not been transparent in its goals. It started off as a temporary transitional housing, but now has evolved into something completely different and no official public knowledge has been given by this nonprofit to inform residents. The only attempt this nonprofit took was from a Facebook post one week ago, and even then, the information provided was very big. This nonprofit is not putting Riverbank citizens first. They were given the opportunity to meet with fellow concerned citizens with Councilmember Ribeiro to facilitate discussion for this project, however, they declined. With how much of this project has already changed since January, it's important to note that the financial need for this project will also continue to change. Today, they are asking to waive $2.1 million in city fees. Tomorrow, it will be something else. This project will be for all of Sanoslos County. By you waiving these fees, you are directly taking funding away from those in, in need of our, in our city. Individuals who do not meet the mental health, substance abuse, foster youth requirement will be left out of this project and continue to face homelessness. This project sounds good on paper, but the people behind it are not looking out for our residents. I understand the focus is on helping those who are not in a, in a position to afford housing without assistance. However, it is equally as important to support those who are the backbone of the city. Without financially stable taxpayers, these types of projects are not sustainable. Riverbank is a growing city, there is a lot that our own citizens still need. There are limited resources for those who choose to pay money to live here. It's not fair to disregard our needs to meet the needs of such a large project like this. This nonprofit is ready to open this proposal to all of Sanoslos County due to the fact that Riverbank alone simply does not have a need for 67 tiny homes. Before we take on a countywide problem, wouldn't it be wiser to focus on our own city and our own problems? And then the last one is from Eileen. Dear Council members, I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed waiver of the developing, development fees for the tiny home project funded under Proposition 1. As a medical professional who has worked closely with the population targeted by this initiative, specifically individuals facing chronic homelessness, substance abuse disorders, and severe mental illness, I have a deep understanding of the complexities and risks involved. Proposition 1 was initially presented to the public as a bold step toward resolving California's homelessness crisis by repurposing billions in previously approved bond funding, including funds from the Mental Health Services Act. However, despite these efforts, data shows that the state has struggled to demonstrate measurable progress. According to the Nonpartisan Legislative Analyst Office, California has spent over $20 billion on homelessness from 2018 to 2023. Yet the homelessness population has continued to rise. Proposition 1 simply redirects more money into programs that have historically lacked transparency, oversight, and accountability. Governor Gavin Newsom's administration has overseen significant investments, investments in homelessness services, yet the outcomes remain deeply concerning. For instance, a state auditor's 2023 report highlighted that over $24 billion in state and federal funding for homelessness since 2018 has yielded, has yielded few trackable results due to a lack of inconsistent data collection and follow-up. These failures should prompt hesitation, not further concessions like fee waivers for high-impact projects with community consequences. These individuals served under Proposition 1 often struggle with co-occurring disorders, including substance abuse and untreated mental illness. While I fully support compassionate care and comprehensive treatment, placing high-concentration housing for these, this demographic into residential neighborhoods without proper clinical infrastructure and safeguards poses genuine risk. I have personally witnessed the unpredictable behaviors that arise when care is inequitable, ranging from self-harm and aggression to property damage and community disruption. The proposed tiny home project without enforced regulation and rigorous medical support risks replicating these outcomes on a larger scale. Waiving development fees further burdens the city and its taxpayers while giving carte blanche to projects that have not proven effective. These fees exist for a reason, to ensure due diligence, fund necessary oversight, and uphold standards that protect public health and safety. Eliminating them undermines the community's right to evaluate and influence projects that will dramatically alter their environment. In conclusion, while I fully support the evidence-based solutions to homelessness and behavioral health issues, this project particularly without development fee obligations is not that. I urge the council to reject the fee waiver and demand greater accountability and planning before allowing Proposition One-funded developments to proceed. Thank you for your consideration. That's all for public comments.
And real quick, let me know if I'm using the wrong terminology here to answer Annabelle's question. The one point five, or the earmark from Senator Eggman specifically for housing affordability and homelessness and right now are committed but not obligated, correct, the project? Um, okay, any other public comment regarding this item? I will bring it back to the council for, for the questions, comments.
I'd like to continue with my presentation so that we can finish with the conversation regarding the fee waivers. So I did just want to bring up, I kind of wrap this particular section up. So the total request being made tonight is a fee waiver of two point six one four, two point six one four um, in building permit fees and system development fees and the allocation of the permanent local housing allocation funding. And with regards to that, I do want to make sure that residents are aware that in November of last year, the city of Riverbank did present a draft housing element, which did provide for a variety of programs that the city would look to implement in assisting developers in order to fund their developments and be able to provide additional affordable housing within the city of Riverbank. So I do want to highlight Program Two Point One B, which says we will continue to assist developers of extremely low, low, and very low-income housing in the grant preparation process to help fund their developments. Funding will be prioritized for the development of affordable housing to extremely low-income households. The city will assist developers by expediting review and approval of development applications to meet funding deadlines and provide information needed to support those funding requests. In addition, Program Three One B of the housing element also states that the city will also defer fees for developments with units affordable to lower-income households until the time that the first inspection or as established in a development agreement between the city and the project applicant. Um, those are programs that we have implemented in the past and that have been offered to housing developments. Most of them will defer until time of building permit. Um, but the city also has the ability to defer until such time that the program or the project is no longer considered an affordable housing project. For example, if it transitions to market-rate housing. So any consideration tonight would be consistent with those goals that have been established within the housing element. And I believe that's all for me. So some of the options being presented tonight is to approve the request as is, which would be the waiver of the building permit fees and the application to uh, make the plan amendment to the permanent local housing allocation funds. Um, you can approve a modified version of the request, so you are able to go through each of the line items and select those that you might want to waive and/or defer. Um, or you can deny the request. Those are the three options presented to council tonight. And that is all from staff.
Thank you. Um, so now any questions or comments? Or we can open it up to proposed motions.
So I will make a motion for item eleven point one, uh, for option three to deny request.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ribe.
Yes.
Excuse me. Councilmember Pimentel.
Yes.
Councilmember Call.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse.
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero to deny the request.
Thank you. Um, we are going to take a very short recess, five minutes, to give everyone a quick break. So we'll come back at eight fifty-five.
Bye, thank you. All right, it's like. Just missing one.
Did he click?
Thank you for doing.
I got this. We're going to Sacramento tomorrow. We're ready to talk first thing. Oh, my God. All right. I got like a quarter inch of coffee if you want it. I was pumping it. No more coffee. He went to go grab it. Okay. I know, I'm talking into it. Um, so we're gonna resume, um, item twelve point one, resolution of concurrence and support for the approval of adopting in concurrence with the Stanislaus Urban County and Stanislaus Home Consortium Fiscal Year Twenty Five Twenty Six Annual Action Plan, the Consolidated Plan for Fiscal Years Twenty Five to Twenty Nine, uh, and supportive submission of the US Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tammy El Cantor, your Assistant City Manager, as well as Letitia Ibanez will present this item.
Good evening. I was gonna introduce Letty to you, Letitia. And, and she's going to start off the presentation and then I'm gonna hop in on it, so.
Good evening, um, Mayor and City Council members. Um, tonight I am going to be presenting the, um, the Fiscal Year Twenty Five Twenty Nine Stanislaus County uh, and urban, Stanislaus Urban County and Home Consortium Consolidated Plan. So, let's see. So the, for the Fiscal Year Twenty Five Twenty Nine Stanislaus Urban County and Home Consortium Consolidated Plan, that consists of these, the cities that are listed on the, on the slide here. So for the agenda, I'm gonna explain a little bit of the overview of the Consolidated Planet effort. The Consolidated Plan, or which we call the COM Plan, is a comprehensive planning document required by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, consist of HUD, that helps state and local jurisdictions assess their affordable housing and community development needs and market conditions. The plan is designed to guide strategic decision-making over a five-year period for federal funding allocations that support housing and infrastructure and economic development initiatives. It is to be updated every five years. The needs analysis, then we like to share some key results from our technical data analysis and the results from the ongoing community engagement. The next section is additional engagement opportunities. We will also provide a brief update on additional engagement opportunities in the near future. And then for the last is questions, and then we'll close it up with a Q and A. So what is a consolidated plan? So basically, it's a, a planning document that's required by HUD and that it needs to be updated every five years in order to receive funding. The framework, as a, as a framework for the community-wide dialogue is to identify housing and community development priorities that align with HUD funding programs with needs of low and moderate-income residents, while also setting priorities for golden funding strategic, strategies for programs like CDBG, home, and ESG. We currently developing the Twenty Five Twenty Nine Consolidated Plan, which is now available for a thirty-day public review and expect to be submitted to HUD in May of two thousand twenty-five. An input from stakeholder meetings like today's, it's critical in shaping the plan's priorities, goals, and funding for recommendations. The federal requirements for consolidated plans consist of the consolidated plan, the one that I just went over, and that's to be completed every five years, an annual action plan that's done annually, and the consolidated annual performance evaluation, which is known as the CAPR. So, um, I just described in general what a consolidated plan is and how it helps to identify the priority needs and specific goals. The consolidated plan is implemented through annual action plans, which is outline each year's activity, activities and use of federal funds to address the plan's priorities and goals. Progress is reported on the consolidated annual performance evaluation report, known as the CAPR, which it tracks accomplishments and outcomes each year towards the consolidated plan goals. So for the regional approach, some jurisdictions prepare their own consolidated plan, while others collaborate on a joint plan to address shared needs. For Fiscal Year Twenty Five Twenty Nine, it's the Stanislaus Urban County and the City of Charlock have developed a joint by-plan consolidated plan to guide the use of federal funds across the cities of Series, Houston, Newman, Oakdale, Patterson, Riverbank, Charlock, Waterford, and unincorporated areas of Stanislaus County. Stanislaus Home Investments Partnership is made up of Stanislaus Urban County and the City of Charlock, with the Stan, with Stanislaus County as being the lead entity for home funds. Stanislaus Urban County includes the city listed above and unincorporated areas. Stanislaus County serves as the lead entity and receives CDBG and ESG funding. City of Charlock is the entitlement jurisdiction for CDBG funding and will be, and will report separately on home activities. So Stanislaus Urban County Fiscal Year for Twenty Five Twenty Five, uh, Twenty Five Twenty Nine, sorry, the estimated CDBG, home, and ESG allocations are noted there under the Community Block Grant and on, on its column, and it has the anticipated funding. So during the fi, uh, the five-year consolidated plan period, the Stanislaus County Urban expects to receive approximately, like for CDBG, it would be like two point three million annually, which will equal out to like eleven point five in a five-year total. For home, um, about one point two six million annually and six point three million in a five-year total. The ESG, known as the Emergency Solutions Grant, two hundred and five thousand annually, which will equal up to one million for a five-year period total. So what are the pro, program over, overviews and uses? So as you can see under the Community Block Grant, it provides, uh, for the, for the activities is the public, public infrastructure improvements, public facilities and community and services, and economic development. And for the home partnerships, it's for construction of new affordable housing, housing rehabilitation, and first-time home buyers activities. And for this, uh, ESG, it is designed to assist people to quickly regain stability in housing after experiencing. a housing crisis or, and/or homelessness. So for example, it provides funding to engage homeless individuals and families living on the street and to rapidly rehouse them. It can help improve the number, quality and operations of emergency shelters for homeless individuals and families, and provide funding to support homeless management uh, information system known as the HMIS. These programs offer flexibility, allowing local communities through this planning process to prioritize the most pressing needs of low and mo, and moderate income residents over the next five years. For the City of Turlock fiscal years 2529, the estimated CDBG allocations, during the five-year consolidated plan, the City of Turlock expects to receive approximately 621,000 annually in CDBG funding for a five-year total, 3.1 million. The City of Turlock will rep, will report remaining home consortium-funded activities in a separate annual action plan, known as the AAP. It expects to receive 110,000 annually in home in, home program income totaling 550,000 over the next five years. The consolid, uh, for the consult, next five-year consolidated plan. The city also has about 6 million in carryover funds from the 2425 AAP Annual Action Plan. Any changes to those funds will be, will be made through a substantial amendment to that AAP if needed. So here are the steps in preparing the 2529 consolidated plan. So before I discuss the needs and analysis and anticipated goals for the 2529 consolidated plan, I'd like to highlight the key steps taken so far and what's ahead. The effort began in, in December with a technical analysis, which is still ongoing and will incorporate community feedback. A community survey was ran from February the 25th of this year, 2025, to March 18th, gathering approximately 188 responses. Key insights will be shared during today's presentation. Today's meeting is just one of the several being held in the next couple of weeks. The draft consolidated plan was made available for a 30-day review on April 4th, 2025. After April's meetings and public review, final drafts will go to Stanislaus County for approval. The joint consolidated plan, Stanislaus Urban County AAP and the City of Turlock AAP, are expected to submit to HUD in May. So, technical needs analysis. We have the four, um, outlined here, the four main categories. And for affordable housing, um, that will consist of like new housing vouchers, um, to provide to households. The community development and services, uh, that would be like for community centers, street improvements, legal services, and public facilities. Um, economic and development broadband, those are examples like employment, training, and digital literacy. And addressing homelessness, um, such as shelters, program to reduce, um, recidivism and substance abuse. In the following slides, I'll delve into these categories, sharing key data from our analysis and community feedback. So what is affordable housing? It's important to clarify what affordable housing means, because it's often misunderstood. Uh, the, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is known as HUD, defines affordable housing as a housing that costs no more than 30% of a household's income. It is known as the 30% rule. Households spending more than 30% consider cost burden, and those spending over 50% are severely cost burdened. Affordability is tied to the AMI, which is the area median income, which HUD calculates annually for, um, Stanislaus County. These figures guide programs like Low Income Housing Tax Credit, and which is a major funding for affordable housing. Uh, the renter income eligibility under HUD is grouped into three tiers. Extremely low income, or, which is at or below AMI, very low income, which is at or below 50% AMI, low income, or lower than 80% AMI. So here's the, um, the income limits for Stanislaus County, these are for 2024. So this 2024, um, income limit table reflects the county's area median income limits, which can help visualize a couple of scenarios and ha, as to how a household may or may not qualify for an affordable housing unit. Each year, HUD develops and in, and releases average family incomes for each metro area in America. So for example, um, a single person in a household earning 31,000 will fall into a 31%, 5, I mean 31% uh, through 50 AMI and would be considered lower income. The next slide is Affordable Housing Data Analysis, which, uh, shows the cost housing burden is highest among the lowest, lowest income households. So, the household income and cost burden are the strongest indicators of housing instab, instability and risk of homelessness. Low-income households that are also cost burdened, spending more than 30% of income on housing are especially vulnerable due to the limited financial flexibility. In Stanislaus County, nearly 80% of the households earning up to 50% AMI are cost burdened. Among those earning up to 30% of AMI, about 68% face severe cost burden, meaning that they spend over 50% of their income just on housing. Nearly half of the households in the 30 to 50% AMI range are also severely cost burdened. This trend, this trend affects both renters and home, and homeowners. Through cost burden is slightly higher among the renters. Next slide is racial/ethnic concentrated areas of property, which is known for ECAP. Certain racial/ethnic groups in Stanislaus County face disproportionate housing needs, particularly in racial/ethnic concentrated areas of property. Um, re, re, are, recaps. There are eight such census tracts in the county located within the city of Modesto. The blue line, uh, the blue line represents the city of Modesto. Uh, the green represents the city of Series, and the unincorporators are the white. So just a quick note, federal funds tied to this consolidated plan can only be used within the urban county's jurisdiction and the City of Turlock, not for the city of Modesto. So this trend here for economic and development and broadband, another key aspect for the consolidated plan is economic development and broadband access is an important part for the Stanislaus region's strategy on workforce development and education. Among working adults 25 and above, most have a high school diploma. 30, 30% or some college education, it's 32%, while 12% hold a voucher degree and 5% have a graduate professional degree. Medium, medium earnings vary widely by educational, educational level, from 27,000 for those with a high school diploma to 87,000 for those with advanced degrees. The overall median income is around 39,000. Beyond education, the plan identifies three economic development priorities. The first one, grow, grow and development to workforce. It improves workforce readiness and skills, expands technical training and entrepreneurial support through partnerships. The second one is strengthens infrastructure, uh, invests in water, wastewater, electrical, rail, road, um, and air transportation syst, and transport systems. The third one is support economic recovery and resilience. Helps boost manufacturing, exports, and job retention. Expands reliable broadband access, enhances disaster planning costs, uh, planning post-COVID. Promote quality of life improvements. And the next, Tammy will take over from this point on. Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna go on to addressing our homelessness. Um, as we've heard, uh, a little bit tonight about the point-in-time count in 2024, um, the guide to homelessness prevention efforts, the consolidated plan uses data from the annual point-in-time count, a one-day snapshot of a sheltered and unsheltered individuals. In 2024, there was about 2,052 people who were counted, a number that has remained steady since 2020. The count showed an even split between sheltered, which means they're in shelters or in transitional housing, and unsheltered on the streets in vehicles of individuals. So our community engagement updates. And this meeting is part about, part of our broader community engagement effort for the consolidated plan. Whoops, sorry. Um, outreach included a community survey, online and in-person meetings, stakeholder interviews, agency consultations, and coordination with local continuum of care. Draft documents were shared online at planning offices and emailed to interested parties. The survey received 188 responses, capturing diverse community input. Um, and there will be some additional, uh, community meetings planned in the next couple of weeks with other entities. Our community survey demographics. Um, this slide summarized the community survey respondents. All five districts were represented. District one had the highest share of 25%. District, um, then the 42% earn below area median income, 29% speak a language other than English, 26% have a disability, 52% are white, non-Hispanic, 36% Latino/Hispanic, and 71% homeowners. So the community surveys' top five most important topics that we learned from the survey um, is affordable housing, more housing for senior families, people with disabilities, and first-time home buyers, homelessness. We need more shelters, outreach, prevention, and supportive housing, support service, increased support for victims of domestic violence and elder abuse, prioritizing community facilities, expanded parks, healthcare, services, and youth centers, and improving transportation infrastructure, safety improvements, walkability, sidewalks, or street lighting, um, and roadway improvements.
Tammy, I got a quick question, if you can back up two now. District one, two, three, four, district five, what's that in reference to?
So the, the, the districts within the countywide.
Uh, okay, gotcha.
So our results for affordable housing. Um, 48% affordable housing options. So the results in regards to affordable housing, 48% wanted affordable housing for options for seniors, 42% construction of affordable homeownership units, 42% affordable housing options for families, 36% affordable housing options for peoples with disabilities, and 36% help buying a home or down payment assistance. And in regards to economic development, um, the community members identified key, key economic development needs. 33% supported storefront improvements. Over 50% prioritized redeveloping or demolishing abandoned properties. And over 50% supported financial assistance for organizations. And then 47% emphasized financial support for entrepreneurs and local businesses. And the results regarding addressing homelessness, 65% um, saw the need for access to homeless shelters, 71% homelessness prevention and outreach, and then 71% for your transitional supportive housing programs. Results for the community development and services. Um, community services rated highest in importance included, um, trash and, and/or debris removal at 23%, youth activities at 22%, anti-crime programs at 13%, and health services at 9%. Regarding public services, over 55% of respondents rated public services as very to extremely important. The highest-rated services were crime prevention at 85%, child abuse prevention at 84%, medical and dental services at 79%, senior services at 76, and drug abuse and education at 76. So the draft consolidated plan goals are all of equal importance and in no particular order. Um, are, the first one listed there are the support affordable and accessible housing, um, address and prevent homelessness, improve public infrastructure facilities, ensure access to essential public services, and the administration of managing funds and ensuring federal compliance. For Stanislaus Urban County and Stanislaus Home Consortium, our annual action plan funding goals, um, are displayed up here in this, um, table, um, which is all the goals that we just went over that I just listed. This gives you the start dates, which is 25 through 29, and most, on some of those. Um, others identified more specific in particular year, years. Um, the funding is identified, what source it's coming from, and then the outcome, uh, the goal outcome indicator. So the number of households or persons their, their goal is to reach. Um, this is City of Turlock's annual action plan and their funding goals. Um, and similar fashion, it identifies the start year, the end year, the category, the needs being addressed, the funding source, and then their goal outcome indicator. So for proposed CDBG projects, these are the projects that are, um, the, the urban county, uh, wide. And, um, I have underlined on there, our, we have, our two projects are a Texas Avenue and Kansas Avenue sewer improvement project, and then our Pi, Pioneer Park Improvement and ADA Updates. Okay. I thought it went twice. So Texas and Kansas Street Sewer Improvement Project, this project is at two locations and consists of the replacement of sewer infrastructure. The proposed project will replace approximately 1,925 linear feet of sewer line replacement. All six-inch sewer lines will be removed and replaced with eight-inch sewer lines, including reconnection of approximately 53 sewer laterals. And this project will, is a multi-year project and will be phased based on the funding availability. So Pioneer Park Improvements and ADA Updates. So Pioneer Park Improvements and ADA Updates. This project involves park improvements and ADA updates, including upgrading concrete pads and paths for accessibility. Installing ADA compliant picnic areas and playground features. Adding new park furnishings, landscaping and sprinkler repairs and enhancing ADA parking access. So this map here identifies the areas that these fundings can, are available to be spent in. You have to be in a census block that is fifty one percent in the low income area in order for you to be able to use that funding in there. So you can see that there are four blocks on there. That are identified, they, well, they call them all block one and block two. So, but there am, we have four, yeah, three, I guess three big ones. Sorry. That's the end of the presentation and we are available to answer any questions that you might have. The draft consolidated plan is on a link on our website. If you, you know, and we've shared that with, in our meet, community meeting that we held on April ninth as well.
Thank you very much. So council comments or questions?
My only question is the survey, did you get a follow-up on if they opened that back up? Because I know they're requesting more responses, but I'm just curious. And then if they do open it back up or since I've been distributing the hard copies you gave me. Will they update the results? Or are we just kind, they're just kind of taking it and then putting it into consideration?
No, they should, they're taking all the public comments up until May fifth. So those, any of them, the hard copies that were done would be incorporated. And the last I checked, I did not receive response, but the last I checked, the link for the survey was still not live.
Thank you. So is there a proposed motion? Public comment, any public comment online or in person?
Mayor, there is no one on Zoom wishing to speak.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to council.
I'll make a motion to approve item twelve point one.
Second.
Rock off please.
Council member Rudeeman?
Yes.
Council member Pimentel?
Yes.
Council member Col?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Twelve point two, a resolution to consider proposed alternative financing district to the city's CFD two thousand and sixteen dash one for the mixed use. A portion of the Crossroads West specific plan and if approved, authorizing the city manager and city attorney to finalize a proposed operating memorandum number two.
Mayor and council, this item is being brought forward to you. In order to satisfy a requirement of the development agreement with Western Pacific Holdings Incorporated. Which set forth some requirements for a community facilities district in order to finance certain maintenance of infrastructure that's being built. Wait for my presentation. It's a little bit of history on the project. So in March two thousand and nineteen, the city council adopted ordinance two thousand and nineteen zero zero four. Which approved a development agreement with Western Pacific Holdings, Inc. For the mixed use MU one property within the Crossroads West specific plan. So this particular property encompasses the Crossroads West Commercial Center. Along with the proposed residential apartments next to it. The development agreement set forth the parameters under which the property can be developed and established certain development rights and entitlements. The article seven of that development agreement was specific to community facilities district. And it provided for three alternatives for the establishment of a maintenance district applicable to that MU one development. The first option was to annex into the city's existing CFD two thousand and sixteen dash one. The second, it was to form a new community facilities district that would be specific to just their development. The CFD two thousand and sixteen dash one is currently a citywide CFD. And number three is to form an alternative equivalent financing mechanism as requested by the developer. For some history for our members of the public and council members. Who are not familiar with our community facilities district. Prior to two thousand and sixteen, the city established landscape and lighting districts. Which is a fee that's assessed on all property owners within that district. And it helps provide funding for maintenance of improvements in what we would consider common areas. Such as medians, parks, storm basins and street lighting. You will typically hear, these are within our older sections of town, but are also in our Crossroads East development. You'll actually get annual reports with regards to the fee that's assessed to those residents. Prior to them being implemented by the county. In two thousand and sixteen, council adopted a citywide CFD. And provides for funding for the cost of maintaining public improvements. And provide services such as police services, landscape maintenance, park maintenance, drainage maintenance and street maintenance. So you'll notice that this one provides an expanded opportunity to provide services to our residents. As well as maintaining common areas. All new developments are required to participate. And for those new developments that are not subject to a development agreement. We typically have them comply with this through conditions of approval. That are placed on their developments through the planning commission process. So tonight, we're considering option three for the MU one property, which is an alternative financing mechanism. So the proposal requests the use of the additional sales tax and property tax revenues. That are going to be generated from the project as a method of financing the maintenance, repair. And replacement of items that are not otherwise already going to be covered by the project themselves. The project is expected to generate sales and property tax at a level that would be sufficient to cover the proposed cost to the city. And a similar arrangement does currently exist within the Crossroads East Commercial Development. Sales and property tax revenues are discretionary and can be allocated by council for operations and key projects. That may not have a dedicated funding source. So that sells and use, sales and property tax that would not otherwise go towards any of those projects can be used towards this particular proposal. So I'll go through each of the various services and or maintenance of infrastructure requirements that's listed in the operating memo and the proposal being presented by the developer. So first is street lighting. So the project itself will be responsible for all electrical metering costs. While the city would make themselves responsible for the repair and replacement of that street lighting. The landscape along the street frontage would be borne by the project itself. They would pay for all water costs. And any maintenance of the landscape area between street curb and sidewalk along Clarabelle, Oakdale and Machado. And the city's responsibility would continue to be the median along Oakdale Road. Storm drainage, we would ma, they would maintain all onsite drainage basin facilities. Cleaning of the catch basins, filters and the manholes. While the city would be responsible for any storm drain pipes and manholes that are located offsite or within the public utility easement. Street maintenance, the project would have no responsibility as it's related to existing streets and roads. Clarabelle and Oakdale Road already existed prior to the project coming into existence. But the city would make itself responsible for Machado Parkway for any repairs and maintenance associated with that. Park maintenance, the commercial space would not have been subject to park maintenance fees to begin with. But they are making some amenities available as part of their proposed development. With some outdoor space and patios, plazas, gardens, gathering places, common courtyards, fire pits, water fountains. And other meeting areas. We would have no responsibility with regards to any maintenance of those particular facilities. Since they would not be on public property. And then with regards to the residential portion, they're also creating some outdoor space. And we'll look at installing pools, lawns, green space, a clubhouse and a sports court. And then with regards to police services, the residential portion is going to be gated. A gated community with onsite management and security cameras available for surveillance. The city would make itself responsible for any general law enforcement services to respond to calls. As we do in any other part of the city. Including the cost to, of the installation and the monthly fee for the license plate readers that are now located at Machado and Clarabelle and at Freddie and Oakdale. So the options being presented today is council can adopt the resolution that would approve the proposed alternative financing mechanism that was just now discussed. Council can direct staff to work with the developer to annex the project into the existing citywide CFD. Or council can direct staff to work with the developer on creating a new community facilities district specifically for their development. I know that representatives of the development team are here available today to answer any questions specific to their alternative financing mechanism. And staff is available to respond to any questions related to the other two options.
Thank you. Any council comments or questions?
Just, just one, if I can have the representatives come up. Just out of kind of transparency, if you guys wouldn't mind kind of just sharing the investments that you guys have gone above your responsibility, just so that kind of the residents are aware of those.
Yeah, in, in terms, in terms of the maintenance of the overall project or just in terms of the investment in the project itself?
Let's go, let's go both.
You know, what we're proposing to do on this particular project is essentially more than we're doing on the existing project that exists. Crossroads, I call it Riverbank One Crossroads Project. Where we do the landscape maintenance on the entire property frontage on Clarabelle and Oakdale. We're doing, you know, I think storm drain maintenance as well in that particular area. We also were working in, in combination with the city, providing our own security measures. We're spending about ninety thousand dollars a year at the present time, providing private security on the property. And, you know, we're very thankful to the sheriff's department. They've been great partners in, you know, keeping the project safe as well. But we believe that's a, a combination that should be handled between both us and the city. On the new project, we're proposing to take on the irrigation costs as well. The electrical costs that's over and above that, the same security, you know, we anticipate. That we'll have the same type of security available for this project as well. Erin, am I missing anything else? I think that's, I think that's the main part of it.
Can you tell the community what makes you guys unique as developers versus other developers?
Yeah, absolutely. I was going to actually do a little bit of a presentation if that's okay. But, but first I just wanted to say thank you very much, Mayor Hernandez, members of the council for the opportunity to present tonight. And, and also for the first opportunity to, to be in front of the new council. Roman Development Company has been involved in the city of Riverbank for over twenty years. Together, we've accomplished an incredible amount in, in Crossroads One. What I call Riverbank One because now there's a second key project that we're involved in. Together, you know, we've accomplished a lot in that great project. But Roman Development Company is very unique in our industry. Both in terms of how we develop projects and in the development of large scale projects. That is traditionally dominated by, you know, Wall Street companies and merchant building companies. We're a, a family run business that's a long-term holder of our real estate. We develop, manage and operate. And a good example is this particular project in Riverbank, we've owned for over twenty years. We're very proactive in our management approach. We don't wait for something to happen. We understand and work collectively with our tenants from the very beginning. If a tenant is coming towards the end of their lease and we find their sales aren't good. We're already working on the next best in class tenant. But it's not just about filling space to us. It's really about doing something that will be a sustainable project that the community is going to love. And that's our best report card for us. If you're a long-term holder. If the community doesn't respect your project and doesn't want to shop at your project, your tenants don't do well. And so if anybody's ever going to be focused like us on the long-term ownership of a project. You really need to make sure that number one, you focus on the best in-class tenants. And so when we developed this project, we took a very patient approach. When the best tenants weren't available, we just did, we sat on the property and worked hard to get those tenants to the table. Sometimes it took us three or four and sometimes five years to get the right tenant. But if your desire is to hold the project and build the best possible project, that's the approach you take where, you know, merchant builders would come in and immediately, you know, they'd, they'd, they'd be working on IRRs and things like that. And as soon as they had a tenant, they would lease it to them. And then, you know, once the project was leased, they'd sell it. And then this problem would become the city's because the tenants wouldn't be successful. And, you know, then it's owned by somebody else or it's owned by multiple owners. Not unlike what's happening in your downtown where there's a billion different owners of properties. And you can't get people that work together collectively to make, you know, the downtown function in an appropriate fashion. So I think that's a huge difference between the way we develop projects. And that's, I think that's the reasons, you know, back in two thousand and sixteen. That when we sat down with the city to work on what we call Crossroads West or Riverbank Two to us. Which is really an expansion of that project. It was really with that same long-term focus. And, you know, it's, it's, it's almost the same program that we put in place when we met with the city. We laid out exactly what we needed in order to establish a successful project and attract the best in-class tenants. And we used the blueprint from the first Riverbank project, Crossroads. And, you know, unfortunately, from about two thousand and sixteen on, the retail market started to get pounded a little bit. You had a bunch of bankruptcies, then you had COVID, then you had, you know, sort of the, the, the spin of e-commerce and what it's sort of done to retail. So it's become a lot more difficult in order to get the best in-class projects to the table. But we put that, that blueprint in place, which included, for example, what's before you tonight. Like in seven point zero one of the development agreement. The ability for us to take on those responsibilities rather than join a CFD but do our own. That also gives us the flexibility to make sure that we make our front door. You know, handle the, the, the maintenance, et cetera, of our front door in a way that we believe is appropriate for a first-class project. So it's, you know, it's a combination of a lot of different things, I think, that make us really unique. And, you know, when we started this project. You know, Costco was on our list, but, but honestly, we, we didn't feel like we'd be able to get them to the table. And through the efforts with the city and our hard, and our team's efforts, we were able to get Costco to the table. And since that occurred, we've got incredible momentum. For a project, Crossroad West took almost sixteen to twenty years to develop the last pad in that shopping center. We have the momentum and enough stuff going on in this project. We believe that in the next two years, we, we, we think we're going to be able to build about eighty five percent of Crossroads West. That's like in record time. That'll be like four years from start. That's like in record time. That'll be like four years from start to finish. And, you know, you, you need to understand that that's being done at a very difficult time, right? We have tariff issues. You've got a financing market that only the most competent development companies can get any loans done in today's world. It's really, really difficult. You've got recessionary fears that are out there. You've got escalating construction costs. You know, you've got, you know, you've got this headwind of issues that we're fighting against, and yet we're still in a position where, you know, we believe by September we'll have, you know, executed leases with the remaining junior anchors in our project and be under construction with 40,000 feet of additional space in addition to the junior anchors that would fill out the entire lineup, which would include, you know, we believe will be under construction in the next 30 days with a brand new Sutter Urgent Care and Medical Facilities. We've got 30,000, yeah, 30,000 feet of additional shop buildings that will be constructed. And we believe that'll start as early as August of this year, which is about 75% pre-leased at the moment, which includes exciting new restaurants, the relocation of one of our existing restaurants, a beautiful outdoor patio that's going to be covered. You know, a brand new, fully, fully amenitized new restaurant that, you know, is taking a very successful restaurant from Riverbank One and including him as a part of this project. So we're, we're super excited about the amount of progress that we had. And it's really, you know, and in all honesty, it's really a, a result of the great relationship and partnership that we have with the city. Because, you know, if we didn't have this blueprint, I can assure you, we wouldn't be able to get this accomplished. And that's really the reason that we're, we're here before you tonight. We've been, we've been working with the city for about five and, I, it's about four and a half months, almost five months in getting the adoption of this alternative financing mechanism, which is tied to our financing. And, you know, it's, it's one of the critical elements to make sure that we remain, that the economics still work for the project. And so that's one of the things that we need to get done tonight. And we would also request that the city council, you know, provide some direction that in the future, because of the timeliness of issues on this project and, you know, the fact that we could go into recession at any moment, that we need to get these things done before something changes. That on future issues that come up on the project, that we would try to get them resolved, you know, in a 30 day window or less, just so that we could keep the momentum. We don't want to lose that momentum that we've been able to create today to, to get to this point. And let me see if I had anything else. I guess the only other thing that I'd like to talk about is, so in order for us to keep the Crossroad West project moving and its financing in place, we need to, we're asking the city to approve tonight as contemplated in the development agreement under 7.01, the alternative and equivalent proposal that we've made for the MU1 properties participation in the city's CFD program. And that's the big issue that we're before you tonight. And lastly, I just thought it was important to talk a lot about some of the benefits that should accrue to the city and the community as a result of the completion or hopefully the completion of the Riverbank Two, or we call Crossroads West project. Number one, upon completion, the project we estimate will generate close to $4 million a year in annual sales tax revenue to the city. That's in addition to property tax increment, additional property tax increment from the project in the range of 230 to 250,000 dollars a year. It should provide 1,000 to 1,200 new jobs in the city of Riverbank and over 1,000 construction jobs in the next two years. It should provide best in class shopping, restaurants, retail and services for the community. It should provide and insulate the city because you will now have two best in class retail projects that will have, you know, essentially virtually all of the best tenants available. So that new projects getting started will have to either take second tier tenants or won't get off the ground, which will just allow us to continue to make sure that Riverbanks projects are the best in class. And finally, it will provide the community with a best in class mixed use retail and residential project that's unheard of in the Central Valley today. And it will raise the, it will raise the bar for other future projects that come before the city as well as offering the first fully amenitized and walkable market rate apartment project in the city of Riverbank. And I, you know, I just want to end by saying I'm very proud to be, to, to have the opportunity to work with the city and be in partnership for what we've accomplished together in Crossroads and now hopefully Crossroads West. I'm hopeful that we have your support and approval on the alternative and equivalent financing mechanism that we brought before you tonight. And I thank you for your time and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you for your acknowledgement and your appreciation of the, the intersectionality of your project with the rest of the city and how it'll support through all aspects, including connectivity and retail. But any questions or comments from the council?
No, I mean, you guys have the momentum behind you guys. So this is kind of a way of just kind of formalizing the agreement. It's, it's what's been done at Crossroads. It's what you guys are currently doing already. And so, yeah, I don't, I don't see why we wouldn't approve this. So would you like a motion or are we still making comments, public comments?
If I could finish my presentation and then we can do some public comment if there's any, because we do have a raised hand. If we do select option one, which is approval of the alternative financing mechanism, there are some proposed language changes to the resolution itself. Currently, there's a whereas recital within the resolution that states the financing mechanism to fund the ongoing maintenance obligations and police protection services will be sales tax and property tax generated by the project. The proposed language would kind of shift that to two different recitals. One will state that the project's CFD obligations, as outlined in the development agreement between the city of Riverbank and Western Pacific Holdings, Inc., will be satisfied through the alternative and equivalent financing method identified in the operating memorandum number two, which is an exhibit, exhibit that was included in your staff report and that will be attached to this resolution. And then the second recital is whereas, given the additional revenue anticipated to be received by the city in both sales tax and property tax as a result of the project, the city approves the use of such anticipated tax revenues, if any, is necessary as an alternative and equivalent financing mechanism for funding any of the project's CFD obligations not otherwise covered under the operating memo number two. So those are two suggested changes that we would recommend incorporating into any adoption of a resolution should city council decide to select that option. In addition, I do want to clarify that the resolution does give myself and the city attorney the authority to finalize the agreement. There are some very minor details, clarifications that are being made to the document. So prior to any signatures, the developers and I and our city attorney will finalize that and get that signed as per the resolution if option one is selected. And that's all I have.
Thank you. We're going to go to public comment real quick. Yes.
Here, council staff, everyone that's here. Olivia Ramula, Brooklyn North Times Real Estate, and my question is just, do we have a place? Is this on a website? Is there a list of all of the tenants that are coming into here? Into the new development that have already signed the agreements?
I'll make a note of your question. That way you can finish your comment. We can answer them fully.
We notify the residents once everything has been finalized through the city of Riverbank. Is that correct?
So typically the city will provide notification when we've received an actual building permit. But I will say that the developer has a great website where they tend to post updates. And so sometimes you'll be able to find updates there sooner than what the city reports.
Thank you. And we had an online question or comment.
We have one on Zoom here. Number ending in 310, oh my gosh, 3108, can you unmute? I'm all the reading. Number ending in 310, yes, go ahead. Ms. Halbert, can you turn your, your TV? Ms. Halbert, can you turn down your computer or TV in the background?
It's not on. It's off.
Or whatever device you're watching.
Can you not hear me?
There's a lot of echo.
Hello?
Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. When you talk about the sales tax and the property tax, are you talking about just the tax from this project? Are you talking about the entire city sales tax and property tax? Reason I'm asking is because that goes for a lot of projects, not just here, but for the whole city. But the whole idea with, with building these projects is that new growth pays for itself. The existing area residents, existing growth does not pay for new growth. That's why they can start at these facility districts. Now, if you did this one, then the next one to come in is going to say, we're not going to do it either because you did that one for them and you're going to have to do it for us. The ones, other ones that are already doing it are going, I don't know why they have to keep doing it. All of these things that they're not going to be paying into, from reading it, it looks like they're only going to provide those things like the storm drainage or the, the lighting or all those other things. But they're not going to provide for the maintenance. That's where the city comes in. They're going to have to spend all this money for staffing to do the maintenance on all these projects. And the parks and, and all that, all that kind of stuff. You're talking about a lot of money there. There's nothing here that says how much it's going to cost the city for them to provide all that for, for them out there. We have no idea what the costs are going to be. We have no idea how much you'll get from them that will cover it. The main thing is the police. Anybody that reads Riverbank News and sees the police beat knows that most of their calls go out to Crossroads Shopping Center. They're always going out there. They're investigating. They're taking people out to, to jail when they arrest them. There's nothing saying that that's not going to be the same on Crossroads West. It's right across the street. You could have the same amount of crime. But you're going to have to pay, or we're going to have to pay for more officers to cover two shopping centers now. But they're not going to be paying for it. Now, Crossroads West has security too, but it doesn't solve the problem of, of the deputies going out there and taking care of that. But they're not going to pay for it either now. So what happens, I mean, you don't have, know for sure how much it's going to cost. One thing, you don't know for sure how much is going to be left for the rest of the city. So our sales tax and property tax is now going to be possibly going to help them. So I'm just wondering why there isn't any financial information or what, what you think it's going to cost. They can say how much they think they're going to get in here, but we don't know how much it's actually going to cost for all this things that the city is going to provide that they won't be providing. But that's my question. Where's the finance on the city? How much it's going to cost for the extra police and the maintenance and stuff? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Halbert. And that's all on Zoom there.
Any other public comment? All right, I'm going to bring it back and could you, I asked you earlier, could you give an example or quantify some of this? How we're balancing that? Yeah, I know the language you mentioned at the very beginning is, it would suffice it, but satisfy it. But, you know, I think we understand it will go well beyond what we're being asked for maintenance, ongoing maintenance.
Yes, so if we go back through the proposal, you'll notice where we would have some responsibility. So yes, there are costs that would be borne naturally by the city regardless of the type of development that this is. And so general law enforcement services would still be provided by the city through the general fund using sales tax and property tax from the development itself. So in response to Ms. Halbert's specific question, the intent is to use new sales tax and property tax that's being generated by the project. It's not anything that we're already receiving from existing development. So this is not supplanting those costs. This is adding additional revenues to be able to provide additional services with those revenues.
Thank you. And so I'm going to bring it back to council and, and there was, and ask that. So we've worked through this and it took us some time to get it in writing, but would like to commit to a speedier turnaround as we're looking potentially at a hopefully two year, 85, 80% build out of this on behalf of the city, if possible, wherever possible.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any other specific clause that would require the depth of information that we were gathering with regards to this proposal. Everything else has been working very well with our planning department and the architectural and site plan review for all of the proposed tenants that are there. So we've pretty much streamlined that process. I think there's one final memo with regards to electric vehicle charging stations that I believe we've worked through. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm not aware of any other pending items that we will need to, to have to clarify.
Thank you. And if there's no more comments or questions, did you have one?
Yeah, I just, one thing. So it was mentioned, knowing what tenants are going in. And I think in a part of the partnership is making sure that we're not behind the eight ball on the tenants that are executing leases. So if we could get that information faster, so we're not blindsided by somebody else posting a graphic and then reaching seven people in the community and then 10 Facebook pages. I think that it would be a huge benefit to all of us so that we could speak of the tenants. I just think that that's a good step in, forward in our partnership. Yes.
Able in a lot of cases to tell you exactly who the tenants are is in all of these tenants leases, not, not necessarily the small ones, but the bigger tenant leases, they make a signed confidentiality agreements. And some of them actually will not move forward. So like even in our conversations, when I'm talking to the city council, I can't tell you. I can say, hey, we're ready to sign a 55,000 foot lease with this great anchor tenant. Or I can say it's a great specialty grocer, but I can't give you the name because it'll, it puts in risk of, of moving that. Now, with respect to the smaller tenants, like, you know, you know, we're working with or we have a signed lease with, we're not necessarily subject to, unless they're, you know, unless they're very particular, I would say one out of 20 of those tenants care. Most of the anchors are really tough about it. So if you could just be a little patient with that. You know, sometimes like we're not allowed to disclose it, but if the brokers that we're working with, it's on their website. We'll try and do a better job of getting it out to the council so that you can talk about the ones that we know. But I didn't want it to come across like we weren't trying to be forthright about it. It's really, I, I think it's silly, but you know, that the tenants are being, like, they're even to the point where even when they're in for building permits, they don't want us talking. There's a couple of them that are like that. That's ridiculous. Their names are on the plans, right? But I can't say it, but if it gets out at that point, it's fine. So that's what's really going on. So I apologize both to the council and the community that were subject in some of those cases. And, you know, there's a couple of really exciting tenants that we're working with. We just, we've heard stories of where it's gotten out and the tenants have just said, we're not going to move forward. We're so excited about a few of the people that we're working with for the community and the council that we just are sort of over the top being protective. But I just wanted you at least to understand. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, I'll bring it back for motion.
I make a motion that we approve a proposed alternative financing district through.
With the amendments, correct?
With the amendments.
Okay, and so just to clarify, this was option three on the 7.1 DA?
Option one and the end.
Option one and the end.
On the first one?
Option three was within the development agreement itself. But tonight, the proposal is option one.
Okay, so if we, let's clarify what option one is.
Council member, or sorry, Vice Mayor Fosse's motion was correct with regards to the proposed alternative financing mechanism.
All right, okay. All right, okay.
So I'll second the motion. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Um, okay, uh, staff comments?
Just a couple of comments. So join us this Saturday from eleven to eight PM in downtown Riverbank for the Somar Cultural Musical Festival. It will be the first year that it's located here in the city of Riverbank, but the fourth year that it has been in existence. Uh, there'll be live entertainment, a car show, many vendors and a kids' corner. And the event is free to the public. So that is here in downtown Riverbank off of Santa Fe and Third Street. A Food Court Fridays will begin next Friday, May second, at the Sports Complex from six to nine PM. We have over thirty-five different cuisines and yummy treats that will be available every Friday throughout the month of May. Stop on by for some great food and some great times. And then a special thank you, uh, to the Riverbank Chamber of Commerce and their partners for hosting the awesome Easter Egg Hunt event this past Saturday. Hundreds from the community were in attendance, enjoying the festivities, vendors, music and great vibes. Thank you for your planning, your execution and care for making Riverbank a better place to be. And that is all from staff today.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So on April seventeenth last week, the mayor, city manager and council all attended and accepted an award from Opportunity Stanlos, Stanislas for, uh, the city of Riverbank for Economic Development Project of the Year, and that was for Crossroads West. And so, um, it was a great opportunity for us to shine and we're very thankful for that. Uh, it was a fun event. And then, uh, May eighteenth, uh, after Mother's Day breakfast with the Riverbank Historical Society and the Women's Group, the Riverbank Federated Women's Group. It's from nine to one at the community center. You can get tickets at the historical society. Uh, you can buy them for me or, uh, Parks and Recs does have some tickets and we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Uribe.
Uh, thank you. So I did kind of share some of my comments already. Um, so I'll just give a quick shout out to the chamber. Great job, uh, hosting the, the event. Uh, huge turnout, very successful. Uh, Parks and Rec, give a shout out to Arizona. He, he did amazing. He rocked it. So appreciate that. Um, really quick, uh, I did mention Sierra House, uh, the restart program, our three graduates, David, John and Sebastian. Um, they've completed this step in their journey and they're kind of moving on to the next step. Uh, what I didn't mention, um, is me and Councilmember Call were able to successfully, uh, advocate for a nonprofit award, nonprofit of the year work through Senator Marie Alvarado Gil. And we are glad to announce that it's gonna be Cambridge Academies, the program that is running restart program. So, uh, looking forward to that, uh, celebration and recognition. And, uh, I know Councilmember Call is excited to kind of brag at the show, so looking forward to that.
Thank you, Councilmember Pimentel.
Yes, I also wanna thank Olivia for inviting me on Saturday to the Easter Egg Hunt. Myself, Elizabeth Uribe and Max Doc Doc, we represented Sister City in volunteering. It was a great turnout, uh, community event. Thank you to Pastor Elias Cordova of Community Praise Tabernacle for volunteering at the event. Uh, Love Riverbank, April twenty-sixth. Thank you Pastor Randy for all of your hard work and time that you put into it. It's gonna be very successful. Uh, there's still time to sign up for the Love Riverbank. You can follow me on Facebook at John C. Pimentel for upcoming events. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCall.
Uh, so on four nine, I went to the Stanislas Homeless Alliance meeting. Uh, every meeting, there's presentations. This particular week Salvation Army was presenting, uh, community assessment, response and engagement, the care team and Stanislas County, um, for the Urban County and Home Consortium Consolidated Plan, which we heard tonight. Um, I just wanted to touch on the care team. They're part of Stanislas County, uh, probation and they provide community outreach and engagement and case management. They connect with our community, they connect our community with resources, mental health assessments. They help them get signed up for voucher programs, EBT. Um, and they do treatment coordination and gather encampment data. On four fifteen, they did their last, um, outreach along the Stanislas River where there were eleven occupants, um, and they were able to make contact with eight of them. Uh, they were able to provide mental health assessment, food, water and additional service with two occupants who were refusing the services. Um, I also went to the California Hispanic Chamber's Annual Business Policy Summit in Sacramento with Stanislas Latino Chamber. Um, I, I was able to gain a lot of insight on the ninety-two bills associated with helping to increase affordability in California and additional bills to ease the process of permitting to build. Uh, key priorities mentioned at the state level are education, affordability and housing. Um, so the state and the people representing you hear everyone loud and clear that we need to make everything more affordable, especially housing. Um, and my key takeaways personally are to mobilize focus and prioritize, uh, my goals. Um, and then my last is based on the tiny home and CBCR proposal. After continuous meetings that we have all had, I feel like, uh, the consistent misrepresentations and really the lack of business planning care. Um, also to reinforce that we are a community-driven council concerned for the overall safety of our, our community and the lack of transparency. I would like council support and consideration or consideration in rescinding the resolution to be a joint applicant on Home Key Plus application with CBCR.
Thank you. Um. So every month, um, so we had a monthly meeting with all the mayors and, um, Riverbank was able to host this month. So we had, um, Turlock Oakdale's Houston Series Mayor come and, uh, join us for a meal at Casa Amigos, a, a new restaurant here. They loved it. So hopefully they'll be visiting Riverbank more often. Um. Amongst some of the things, I, I attended Stan Cog, uh, as the, the representing member for a city. And, uh, we went over things like the federal legislative platform specific to our county, um, in transportation needs. Um, and, uh, one of the larger items was working through our approving a work plan, um, for this next fiscal year. Um. Let me see, just to not reiterate, I, we filmed the, sue the city address. So, um, hopefully that'll be, or that will be available online, uh, for those who missed it, if you happen to be interested in watching it. And that is it. So this, this week we're looking forward to, I believe it's just Councilmember Call and I going to Sacramento, um, for CalCities. So a statewide, um, advocacy for some legislation that, that affects cities directly. So that is it for me. We are gonna move to closed session. So we have item fourteen point one liability claims pursuant to government code five four nine six one. Claimant Nathan Wilson, agen- agency claimed against City Riverbank. Uh, item fourteen point two conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code five four nine five six point eight. Property Moral Road, APN zero seven four zero zero six zero two three. Agency negotiator Marisa Lich Garcia, city manager, property negotiator Moral Road LLC. Under negotiation, price, terms of payment or both. And is that? Yep, so we are going to adjourn to closed session. Bye.
Ten more, ten more.
Okay. So we are going to adjourn to closed session.
Bye.
Timor, Timor.
Okay. Um, we are back from closed session, item fifteen point one, we're from, wait. A direction has been given, item fifteen point two, direction has been given. Um, our next regular city council meeting will be on Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, this meeting is adjourned.
Hi, guys.
Hi.